Very good then. I will call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for November 8, 2018. Commissioner Kuzinski, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please stand. Do you have any pledge, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And City Planner Perez, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzinski?
Kuzinski.
Kuzinski? Okay. Commissioner Tally?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Chair Protem Blackwell?
Here.
Vice Chair Roulan?
Here.
Chair Crandall? He's not in. Yeah, absent.
Very good. Thank you. And while we're here, I just wanted to introduce our new city planner, Gabriel Perez, who just joined us. This is his first Planning Commission meeting with us, so welcome. We're delighted to have you. You want to take a minute and introduce yourself to us in the public?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Perez. I'm your new city planner. I'm pleased to be here. I've been here three weeks so far. Previously, I worked for the City of La Quinta as the planning manager there. So if you're familiar with City of La Quinta, it's out in the desert by Palm Springs. So I definitely came to cooler weather coming to San Clemente, and I'm enjoying it. Previous to that, I was the principal planner for the City of Riverside. And then previous to the City of Riverside, senior and associate planner at the City of Coachella. So pleased to be here and look forward to the journey ahead with the planning commissioners.
Great. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Let's see. Special Order of Business, we have none. Minutes, we have two minutes to approve. The minutes of the regular study session for October 17th. Is there any changes or a motion to approve?
There. Chairman, there is one change that we'd recommend for the agenda. We'd recommend that items 8C and 8D, which are related to short-term lodging units?
Yeah, let's go. When we get to the public hearing, let's get to that. So for now, let's get to the meetings and the oral and written communications. Then we'll jump down there and we'll jump into that. Thank you. So minutes, any changes for the study session?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the study session of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission, October 17, 2018.
Moved by Tally.
Second.
Seconded by Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I abstain, because I was asked.
So we have five in favor, one abstain, one absent. Are there any changes or a motion for the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of October 17?
I have a change I'd like to make on page seven. Item 11 at the bottom says, "Commissioner Wu reported at its last meeting, the coastal advisory committee recommended the city." I'd like to change to that the coastal committee, the coastal advisory committee was informed that the city participated in a food collection pilot program. And then after that, "N" was informed that CAC will discuss an update of Clean Ocean Renewal Process.
Okay. Do you have that text for the secretary?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get all that?
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission of October 17, 2018, at 7:00. It'll be approved.
Second.
Moved by Tally. Seconded by Kuzinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstain. So again, five, one, and one absent. Next item of business is oral and written communications. Members of the public may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak tonight on any item that's not on our agenda? All right. Seeing no one, we will close the oral and written communication. We have nothing for the consent calendar, so we are at our public hearings. And I think staff had a request regarding the agenda.
Yes. We'd like, staff would like to request that items A, C, and 8D be brought to the front of the agenda, and also the other items E and F.
Okay. So...
And the reason why these are appeals, usually the appeals are heard at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. So any issues?
So C through F?
C through C, 8C, 8D, 8E, and 8F be brought to the beginning of the, maybe it's easier to say, items 8A and 8B will be moved to the end of the public hearing section.
Yes. Thank you.
Any issues?
I support it. Saves people's time.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that? I can never remember for a change in the agenda. Okay, great. So we will begin then with item 8C, 235 Avenue de Lobiero, Unit 101. Oh, I beg your pardon. I didn't read the beginning of the public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. So we'll move ahead with item 8C, 235 Avenue de Lobiero, Unit 101. Appeal STLU 18-507 of denial of short-term lodging unit permit number 18-357.
Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, this item, staff is requesting that it be pulled from the agenda. After considering the issues involved in this appeal at length with our city attorney, we've concluded that as a matter of law, the amortization request can be approved. So we're pulling this item from the agenda so we can work with the property owner on the approval of the amortization request. So the appeal will not be before the Planning Commission tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion to table item 8C?
I shall move.
Second.
Moved by Brown. Seconded by Tally. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item 8D, 317 Avenue de Del Mar, Unit C. Appeal STLU 18-509 of denial of short-term lodging unit amortization extension permit number 18-343. Please.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff is also requesting that this item be pulled from the agenda. We actually are going to be pursuing a code amendment to address this type of TOT violation where a property owner files no tax return because the unit isn't rented, and that that failure to file a zero return is not considered a violation or meant to impact good standing. So we're looking to carve a very narrow exception in the code for that, so we wish to pull this item from the agenda as well.
I'd like to ask a question about that. So we're pursuing a code amendment. Are we going to apply that amendment retrospectively?
I don't, if we did, yes, we would. And it would only apply to maybe, actually, this would be the only property it would apply to. Because of the amortization provisions in the code and how they're written, you had 30 days to apply for your eight-year extension, and then that 30-day timeframe has come and gone.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to table item 8D?
Second.
Moved by Tally. Seconded by Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. We move on to item 8E, 228 West Mariposa, Unit 2. Appeal STLU 18-508 of denial of short-term lodging unit amortization extension permit number 18-368.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Carl Steele, Senior Planner, here tonight for Stephanie Rojas, who prepared your staff report. He's not here tonight. For item 8E, and the appeal of non-conforming short-term lodging unit STLU amortization extension denial, AP STLU 18-508. So a little background on the short-term lodging unit, which is also STLU is the short we use for that, for the two appeals tonight. STLU means any lodging unit that's occupied or intended to be designed or occupied on a short-term basis for 29 days or less. Regarding the STLU ordinance, before 2016, a vacation rental permit was required. They were allowed anywhere in the city without specific regulations. There was no separate zoning permit, and they were reviewed as part of a business license. Tax returns were required to be filed quarterly. In May 2016, the city adopted the STLU ordinance. It restricted the location of STLUs to higher-density zones for visitor-serving areas. It created operational and location standards. It established the STLU zoning permit. And non-conforming STLUs were granted two-year amortization period where they could continue to operate for two additional years. In May 2018, the city amended the STLU ordinance with various changes, including expanded locations where STLUs are allowed, on Buena Vista near North Beach, and on the Montavo-Lobiero Loop. It extended the amortization period by eight years for non-conforming STLUs that met certain requirements, among other changes. And this map is the location of the subject appeal, 228 West Mariposa, Unit 2. This is the map that was in the staff report. There are other existing STLUs located in the area as seen here and as was shown in the staff report. And then this is the street view of the subject site. So here is the permit checklist with the certain requirements previously referenced for an STLU. If the STLU fails to meet any of these requirements, the STLU ordinance requires denial of the extension. In this case, the application did not meet the any violations of transient occupancy tax, TOT ordinance, were cured within 30 days of notice. With regard to the subject property, finance records show the STLU generated TOT-related delinquencies over a total of three quarters, as seen here in quarter two of 2017, quarter three of 2017, and quarter four of 2017. In summary, the appellant has violated the TOT ordinance on three separate occasions and failed to cure the violations within 30 days to their respective notices. To be deemed in good standing, the appellant would need to prove that none of the violations occurred or that none of the violations went un-cured for more than 30 days. So therefore, staff recommends the commission determine the project exempt from SEQA, and the commission uphold the community development director's denial and adopt PC Resolution Number 18-027, denying the permit. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Please, Commissioner Tally.
Can you walk me through the process for notification that a TOT remittance is late in a report, or a report and/or payment is late?
I believe they receive, they receive a notice that the payment, when the payment's due, and then they receive a notice 30 days later when it's late. And then we follow up subsequently, depending on the case. Not a lot of them go through that.
And how is that notice delivered?
By mail.
Just regular mail?
I believe so.
No certification of that mail?
No.
No.
Okay. And do we have other types of notices that we give in the city for fees or dues or taxes, I guess, that we have a 30-day period where we send that by normal mail? I'm thinking about like when I get notices from taxing entities in my business, those are usually sent certified?
I'm not aware of that.
And to grab your attention, right?
Typically, city notices are sent through regular mail. I can think of like code enforcement notices. We send them through regular mail.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, well, actually, it says here in the staff report, after the two-week period, it looks to be, finance issues a judgment notice. It's on page 48C or 4C. Is the judgment notice in effect done by certified mail? Since it is a judgment notice, a legal.
I don't know. I could ask.
Actually, I got a follow-up.
Yes.
Jason, so is that judgment notice recorded with the county? Or with a court?
The judgment notice? We could ask counsel to, I think we could ask counsel about that.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if I often see my finance department. I don't think they do.
Okay.
And then my follow-up question is, just based upon the material I read, all payments were eventually made regardless of the time?
Correct.
They are current as of the date of the application?
Yes.
Okay.
They were current with payments when they made the application?
Yes. Excuse me.
What was the question?
They were current. It's the date of the application was made. All TOT fees were paid and remitted properly.
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Then I'll invite the appellant to come up. You have 10 minutes to speak to the Planning Commission, if you wish.
I'm Kiara Jones, and my husband, Josh Jones, and we're the owners of the STLU that we're appealing. I personally am not going to talk much about the reasons behind having late. I think you have the letter that I wrote with my supporting evidence, but because it's a personal health issue, I don't prefer to speak about it in front of anyone, but I am available for questions if you have a specific question related to it. To answer the question which someone did, we were current at the time our application was submitted, I believe, in May of this year. We were actually caught up to date on everything, and you can see that the quarters were consecutive quarters due to some personal things. So also, the notices, I've never received a judgment notice. I don't know what that is. And they don't send notices when your taxes are due. You're just supposed to pay them. You have like 30 days past the end of the quarter. And we have been doing it since 2015 and never had any issues until some things came up last year. But just so, that's the process that we've always, there's never been any notices from the city regarding anything really until now. So if you have any questions, I'm available to answer those, or if anything's unclear.
Thank you. And it looks like Commissioner Brown's got a question?
Okay.
Yeah, so you started this STLU in 2015?
Actually, it might have been 2014. I don't remember exactly.
Okay. So you were aware of the requirement to pay these quarterly taxes?
Yeah, absolutely. And we have a good standing history of that.
So you had three or four years' experience, in fact, paying these on time?
Yeah. Unfortunately, my health issue that I had last year, I didn't have experience in dealing with that. So had I, I would have probably planned appropriately or had other people help me do what I was normally the one doing, which was paying the taxes on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the speaker? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I will open the public hearing. Do we have any cards for speakers on item 8E?
No, sir.
Of speakers. All right. Then I will close the public hearing, and we'll open this up for Planning Commission discussion. Anyone want to start us off? Jason?
So I look at this appeal, and this is, this is one of those times when I think that discretion is, you know, part of our job, right? I guess there's the term prosecutorial discretion that is often used in the legal world, which is sometimes you take a look at the situation and the extenuating circumstances, and you make a judgment call. There's a couple of things that I'm, that I'm looking at here. The first one of which is that they did, in fact, pay their taxes. They paid the penalties, and they paid the interest. I think that's, that's, that's good. I'm troubled by the lack of, of a chain that we have from the city's perspective on when we send these notices out, that they're not sent by certified mail, that we're not doing more to hammer home the point that this is, this is important. I, and...
Chair, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think before the commission gets too far in this discussion, I just wanted to raise a, well, I believe, the legal issue in terms of interpreting your STLU ordinance for purposes of deliberation on this. The ordinance, by its own terms, indicates that the decision on whether or not to allow the extension of the amortization, whether or not the elements are met by the applicant are ministerial. And that means that unlike other matters that come before the commission, like a CUP or a variance where you are authorized to exercise discretion, in a ministerial decision, you look strictly at the language of the statute and determine whether or not there has been strict compliance with the language. And that's the basis on which you make your decision. Now, that being said, certainly, the commission would have discretion to continue the matter if it wanted to recommend to the council changes to this ordinance to allow for some discretion in the case of hardships of, you know, some determining, within some determining boundaries. But the way it's currently written, there is no discretion written into the statute. In fact, it specifically says the decision is ministerial. So I didn't want the commission to go down that road if, as it's currently written, the ordinance doesn't allow for that discretion.
Thank you very much. Good clarification. Please.
So I'll continue. That my concern that I have here is the notice of the, of the tax and the, and what the city did to notify, notified them of a delinquency in that tax. And, and I think the, I'm not convinced that, that that notice, and even when we talk about some of the, some of the terms that were used on this here, the judgment notice and/or if a judgment notice was sent, and what that really meant, I'm not sure that that's enough to place the applicant or the appellant on notice that they were not in compliance with the, the TOT tax. Because remember, in order to be in compliance with it, the process and procedures have to be, have to be legal. And, and that process has to be followed. And if that process wasn't followed, I'm not convinced that, that somebody could be found delinquent in that process. And we seem to have a little bit of lack of knowledge on whether that process was followed and what that process actually entails. So...
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
Well, I guess I would take the other side of the view on that, because after, if what's in my staff report says, after X amount of time, then it knows that this delinquency is sent, and after, after an additional two-week period, then a judgment notice is sent, and then after another additional two-week period, then they file a lien against the property. So presented on the judgment, so a lien is a fairly serious action taken against the property owner, and certainly, that's sent by some form of mail that somebody's got to open and take knowledge of, that happened over, you know, three-quarters of a year. Would the Assistant City Attorney need to, I'd like to comment on that. I mean, a lien is a lien. That's a pretty serious undertaking. Is that correct?
Well, yes, it is. I think, as I read the staff report, and certainly staff can correct me if I'm wrong, in reading it in light of the STLU ordinance, the 30 days, 30-day window to cure that's allowed under the ordinance starts, is triggered from the notice of the delinquency. So in order to determine whether or not there's been compliance with the ordinance, I don't believe as a matter of law you need to look past the date of the notice of delinquency, because that's what triggers the 30-day period. Whether or not there were subsequent notices under the terms of your ordinance don't seem to be relevant to the inquiry before the commission, which is, was the delinquency cured within 30 days of the notice of the delinquency?
Thank you.
Senator?
In my viewpoint, this is a pretty clear-cut issue. The fact is black and white. The applicant does not meet all the requirements on the tax payment. So this is a ministerial decision. And my first reaction is always defer to the director of community development. And the city, our STLU ordinance requires the STLU to be allowed only in certain area. And the amortization, the purpose of that amortization is to, over the time, we weed those STLU, not allow them, we weed them out. Eventually, we get rid of them. So for this point, I think a decision to deny is consistent with that general plan and objective of that policy. But I'm slightly, in the last couple of minutes, I was told that the city is amending the code to permit the previous appeal. It's a separate item, but I feel that it's slightly not a fair treatment. I think...
I just, if I could, it seems to me we're starting to talk about something that's not agendized. I just want to make sure we don't go off the rails, so.
It was agenda, it was just approved.
I think that, I don't think we're, the commissioner is going too far astray there here. I think what he's trying to do, and I won't put words in his mouth, is I think he's kind of laying some groundwork for how he feels about the pending appeal. So I think it would be appropriate.
Very good. Thank you, partner.
Essentially, I think the applicant is asking for a leniency from the city. As the planning commissioner, I believe my hands are tied here. I do not have that authority to give you the leniency because we're bound by this ministerial checklist. The city council is the body who can give you the leniency. I'm slightly troubled by the fact that the city is going to amend the ordinance to allow the previous one, not this one. If we were to show some leniency, we would just give both of them, not pick one and deny the other one. So for that matter, I think I would support the denial of this one, but I think we need to be consistent.
Okay. Jason?
Counselor, I've got a quick question on procedure. If we are to deny this appeal, the applicant has the ability to appeal this to the city council, is that correct?
That's correct.
And at the city council level, the city council can exercise discretion that may be outside of our purview?
Well, the city council would similarly be bound by the language of the STLU ordinance. But the city council also has obviously authority to amend the municipal code. So if it desired, it could initiate a code amendment or direct staff to include in a code amendment that it's currently working on some language to allow for some discretion on the part of the director or the commission or both for certain circumstances, for lack of a better term, hardship circumstances. So as I had said earlier, if the, right now, the way the statute is written, the commission doesn't have that discretion. If it, one option it would have would be to continue this matter and make a request that the council include an amendment to address these types of situations. But that ability to amend the council is certainly within the discretion of the city council.
I do have a follow-on question for staff. Sorry. There was a, I see in our information here there were notices of delinquencies that were issued on three separate dates, for three separate delinquencies. Where, however, when I follow the checklist here, I see that after approximately 24 days after those notices are sent, right, there's 10 days and then a two-week period, there should be a judgment notice that was issued? Were judgment notices issued in these three separate instances?
No.
No. Okay. And so I'm going to assume that the answer to the next question is no, which is after an additional two-week period, that a lien was not filed against the property?
No.
So we didn't follow, and that's codified, correct? That's what we're supposed to do?
I believe so.
And so we didn't follow our codification on enforcement of the STLU ordinance?
The STLU regulations are in Title 17. The TOT remittance and filing is in a different chapter of the municipal code. So I don't know if those steps that are identified here, that finance typically follows, is codified. But in this case, they followed some of the noticing requirements, and then eventually TOT was remitted just past the 30 days.
We don't have any idea if the TOT was remitted as a function of the notice and our lack of following the code on other items, or if it was just filed because they filed them at that time? You could file a tax return six months after it was due, and it wasn't in relationship to a notice that you received. It was filed six months late. Not disputing that it's filed six months late, but it wasn't as a direct approximate result of the notice that was received. Maybe we don't...
I can't give you the exact dates beyond the ones that are listed here, and finance wasn't available to attend the meeting tonight.
Okay. Tom?
No, I just, you know, you have to kind of figure that that's not really germane to the process here. It's like, within the code, what we've been asked to look at on the appeal here is the basis of whether it was late or not. Is that correct? I mean, were they on time or not? You know, were the various notices sent? I'm sure there's processes of it, which is, was as interesting, we have an issue before us, which somehow can be made legal for some reason, which I didn't discern on the preceding one, which is a little confusing. But the matter before us, agendized tonight, they did not comply with the code. And so that's, we have very little discretion in this matter, so it's...
So what I mean?
And so, I mean, I don't think your particular discussion here, whether it was filed six months late, because I felt like it is germane to the process at all. And so...
The council, the commission's in discussion right now.
So it's a very tight, our feelings are not in play here. It's what's, the code is laid before us, is what the decisions were required to make based on the code and whether they complied with the code or not. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That, and the determination was made ministerially that for three-quarters, they didn't comply. So I think, you know, regardless of feelings on the subject or whatever, we'll iterate what the finance department did, other than a lien is a lien, which is a serious issue in my mind. We...
Excuse me. The commission's in discussion.
I think it's unfortunate, but I think our particular decision is very laid out.
Okay. Michael?
Yes. Yes, thank you. So legal had presented a possible option, I don't know if anybody caught that, but it would be to table this for later discussion and then ask council to consider a code amendment. So if that was the avenue, we would take, our city planner, maybe even Cecilia, if we wanted to get into that discussion and that route, what would we be looking at in time? Because there'd be a public process associated with the code amendment, right? And how would that relate to this project?
Yeah, so that's something that we could explore with the council. The council would certainly have to initiate that type of amendment to the ordinance. If they did, we could fold it into other changes. In terms of timing, you know, it would take a few months. So in the meantime, the permit is held in abeyance.
Okay, so it'd be just in limbo until we can come to some resolution and maybe possibly establish a hardship process or something like this. So it would come before us again for discussion, and then we'd have some tools to really work with.
Correct.
Make discretionary action on it. So that's on the table as well for all of us, for inclined to go that way.
Okay. Senator?
I would be a little reluctant to ask the city council to make an exception for each individual party. And they just open the floodgate. I think the purpose of the ordinance is clear. And the council wanted staff to enforce it strictly, and that's exactly what staff did. However, it's a little different on the 8B, which caused some confusion for me.
I'm going to step in here. I agree that we don't have a lot of discretion here. Our job is to really ask the question of, you know, was, I think, was staff correct in their interpretation of the zoning ordinance when they denied these applications? If there was some procedural issue, then maybe we could continue to, as a way of identifying that. I haven't seen any direct evidence that there was some procedural problem. This is a business, though, too, and as a result, they have a responsibility to pay their TOT on time, whether they're reminded or not, although it's certainly appropriate for us to remind them and have certain, you know, leeways and grace periods, and it looks like that was fulfilled. So, you know, hearing this discussion, I think there's been some good discussion on this, but I don't see that there was an incorrect decision made by staff so far in terms of interpreting the zoning ordinance here. It's useful to remember, too, that, well, the applicant is sort of the important party tonight. There's more parties involved. There's all these, the reason we have the zoning ordinance the way we have it is because of lots and lots and lots of planning commission and city council meetings over the years, some lawsuits and agreements, and, you know, things were crafted in just the way that they are. And, you know, these are the rules as a result of that crafting. So the people in the neighborhood and, you know, the other things like housing stock and all those other effects of a non-conforming use are why we have those rules, to try and manage that. And this falls, this is one of the STLUs that falls into the place, it seems, that isn't, you know, falls on the line of not being allowed if you follow these rules in a strict way. So that's what it's looking like to me, and if the city council decides they want to change zoning ordinance and direct us to do that, that's certainly their purview. But as the current zoning ordinance stands, that's the way it seems to me, you know, so far, at least at this point in the discussion. Jason, please.
So I think everybody has hit the nail on the head, which is complying with the code, right? That's what we have to do here. We have to comply with the code. And I think it's important to understand that the code allows for the director to make a determination if the TOT taxes were paid within 30 days of their respective notices. And our code specifically calls out that a notice of delinquency must be filed. And 10 days after that notice of delinquency, the tax is supposed to be filed, okay? So we have, of that 30 days that you have to file the tax to be able to receive the exemption here that was denied, you have 30 days. So 10 days is used up from the date of the notice, and then there's mailing periods and such, I'm sure, but you have 20 days that are left. After that expiration of that 10 days, 14 days from there, the city is supposed to issue a judgment notice, okay? So you've got 14, so you've got six days left once you receive that judgment notice to make your payment of TOT before you run afoul of this 30 days that triggered this appeal. Now, the city can't tell us whether that judgment notice was issued or not. And it seems to me that we have to hold ourselves, meaning the city, to the highest possible standards in making sure that we follow the code before we say that somebody didn't. And I think that's the issue here, which is, you know, we sent out the notice. The city has dates on the notice, but we don't know if there was a judgment notice that was sent out. And candidly, whether or not there was a lien that was filed doesn't matter because that's outside of the 30-day period. The 30-day period is the critical point here. And I can't make a finding that the city did what it was supposed to do. And as such, I'm not sure that it upheld its end of the TOT ordinance.
But you're not asked to make a finding?
No, I'm asked to decide whether or not everybody complied. And the city has to comply, probably more so than anybody else. We have to hold ourselves to the absolute highest standards in making sure that we cross every T and dot every I. And if we didn't do that, then it's very easy for me to say that, you know, that we should grant the appeal. And that's where I come down, which is I don't see that we did everything by the book. And maybe we did, but in the body of evidence that I have in front of me tonight when I'm having to make this determination, I can't find that. So, and it sounds like I'm in a minority, and I can appreciate that. That's probably...
I think you're going down a direction here that is beyond the purview of the commission. If I look at quarter two, a notice was set on 9 August and then finally filed a return on 2 October. And then on December 19th, another delinquency was sent out, and they finally paid it in May 15th, five or six months later. And so, and then finally, on the last, the last fourth quarter, was sent on 20 February. And then finally, it was also paid on May 15th. So there's huge amounts of time in here, regardless of whatever was or was not filed as far as liens and all that, which are not in the staff report, which probably should be in future efforts as far as this particular, you know, these appeals, because we're going to probably have several more coming this way. But within the code that we're asked to judge, I just don't, I think you're outside the box. I'm sorry, but I have an agreement to disagree that, to me, the city, if you take five months to pay for it, it's, there was a lot of other notices that came in the mailbox somewhere that didn't get addressed.
The TOT ordinance, I think, spells out, or at least the process that's outlined to us here, spells out the steps that the city must take. And I have no doubt that they sent the notices, and I have no doubt that the taxes were paid outside of the 30 days. Those are very clear. My question is, there is an intermediate step that is an additional noticing element within those original 30 days. And I do not know that the city, it's not in our, it's not in our documents here, and candidly, that's probably something that finance should have provided. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not, you know, beating anybody down on that. It's just, that is an additional noticing element that's provided for. And if we didn't do that, that was inside the curable period. Whether or not it would have been cured within that period, I don't know, and I can't hazard a guess. But we didn't do that. And as such...
We don't have any, we don't... We don't have any evidence that said we didn't do it.
But we don't have the evidence that says we did do it, and we're the prosecuting body, and we have to provide that evidence. That's the point. We're the government. We have to provide beyond, beyond the shadow of a doubt that we did do it. And absent that...
What's a shadow of a doubt for legal standing?
I won't use the legal standing that I would do, which is we should have sent it certified mail. Then you've got a receipt, but we didn't.
Beyond reasonable doubt, what's a shadow of a doubt?
Commissioner Brown, beyond a shadow of a doubt is absolutely certainty. Nothing legal...
When I asked, when I asked, we didn't know.
It's not required in any case, even in criminal case.
The question was, we didn't know if we did it or not. It's not even to that level of maybe or maybe not. It was, we didn't know. So that's, I don't disagree with any of the statements that are being made up here. And had we had that, there would be no basis for me to say that this appeal should be sustained. sustained.
Senator, did you have something to add?
I have a question for the council. In their, in our zoning code, there is another provision that allows an applicant to apply for amortization extension underneath financial hardship. Is that correct?
To apply for amortization for financial hardship?
For the reason of financial hardship. If I look at the nonconforming amortization extension of STLU, there are typical amortization extension with the ministerial decision, then there is a separate vehicle. It's also amortization extension, but underneath the financial hardship.
I don't know that that would apply here, but let me refer to staff on that. That wasn't an issue in the appeal, so...
Yes, there is a provision in the STLU regulations that allows someone to request an extension to the amortization period for, well, not hardship, but for any stranded investment or any capital on the property that they wish to recoup. So, we laid out a process for them to apply and submit financial information to support the continuing operation of that vacation rental at that location.
So, the applicant has, in addition to appealing, say, if it's got it denied tonight again, they have an option to appeal to the City Council for tonight's decision. They also have another alternative option to pursue that, the alternative amortization extension. They still have that option.
Yes, that would.
It's just the Fifth Amendment, right?
Yes, that would be an option available.
But just, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
But just to be clear, council would still have to amend ordinance to make a, take an action that's outside of those confines of what we're sort of bound to right now, if it's the same as legal had explained to us.
If they appeal this decision, right.
Right.
But not if they take the second track that the commissioner was speaking to, right.
But if council decides to give them a break, can they make a decision on the spot, regardless of checklist?
No, what the council would have to do would be to initiate a code amendment to create an exception, if you will, and so that they would be able to have a basis in the code to grant the appeal.
Can you tell me a little bit about the code amendment, as the city just mentioned, on the 8C case? What is that amendment about?
That's intended to not penalize a property owner or STLU operator who doesn't rent out their property but fails to file the zero return from that being a violation of the TOT regulations and doesn't count against them for the purposes of being in good standing.
Is there any chance the council would expand that to cover other situations?
We'd have to explore that with the council.
And that process has been initiated?
For the very narrow zero TOT return, yes, but not for anything else.
Okay. Now, the council, can the city make a rule change and apply to previous case?
I'm sorry, can they make a rule change and apply, like, for example, to this particular case?
To the case in 8C. The city is initiating a zoning amendment change, zoning amendment, and going to apply that amendment to a case.
Well, there hasn't been...
Something already happened.
Right, but there hasn't been a decision on the appeal of the 8C item, and so, because the planning commission has tabled the matter, there hasn't been a decision on it, so at the time that the planning commission considers the matter on merits, if the council in the interim has amended the zoning code to allow for this situation, then it wouldn't be retroactive because they wouldn't have, you would only be considering it for the first time with the new rule.
Okay, so what table?
So you're tabling 8C to just see whether or not the council amends the code.
Okay.
And then, once a determination is made on whether or not the code is going to be amended, one way or the other, then the planning commission will, then this item will be brought back to the planning commission, 8C, for determination on merits.
Okay, so by the time we apply it, it's not a retrospective?
Correct, because you won't have acted on it yet.
Thank you.
Jason, did you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I was just briefly glancing at the code. Do we know that when the notices are given for the failure to pay the TOT tax, which I assume is the notice that we're talking about here, does that have a section in there notifying the potential, or I guess the taxpayer, that they have a right to an appeal?
Yes, that is always in the notice.
Okay, so, and that was in the original notices that were...
Yes, that is correct.
And were any notices for appeal timely filed in this matter?
No, none, none were filed.
Okay, and I don't know if council can give us whether or not, an opinion on whether or not the two-week judgment notice is actually part of the code, or if that's just a process by which the city follows?
I'm not aware that it's codified, but I can't tell you definitively whether or not that's a codified process, or whether or not that's just an administrative process that the finance department follows.
And the difference would be if it's an administrative process, then it's probably not part of the TOT ordinance, it's part of just an administrative process.
Well, regardless, I don't believe it's part of the TOT process. I believe what, I'm sorry, not part of the STLU process. It could be part of the TOT process, either codified or administrative. Not all processes have to be codified. Some can be just administratively enforced, like a policy of the department. Doesn't have to be codified.
And the difference would be that if the TOT ordinance doesn't specifically follow this, and go with me here on this for just a second, in order to be in violation of the TOT ordinance, if it's an administrative function, it's not part of the TOT ordinance, it's just, you know, part of the policy of the office, right? So, whether or not the TOT ordinance was followed wouldn't impact, wouldn't impact it if it was a policy statement or a policy, it wouldn't have any bearing on a TOT ordinance and/or the compliance with the TOT ordinance. It would just simply be the way that they send out the notices at the, or send out the bills at the city level.
Well, you know, I hesitate to opine on the impact of the policy, because, say, for example, it's an administrative process, but someplace in the TOT code, it says that the director shall adopt a policy that shall be enforced, then it might be part of the... So, I, as I say, I hesitate to opine on codes that aren't before me, so it's a little bit hypothetical. I can tell you that that practice is not referenced in the STLU ordinance that's before this commission.
And Cecilia? Sorry to make you jump up again. Quick question. I take it that the mailings and notifications, et cetera, for this particular STLU owner was handled in the same way that we handle all TOT notifications, all requests for TOT to be paid and everything. There was no difference in the way administratively these people were approached, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, I remember when we waded through this STLU ordinance, and you were there, and the silver living home issue, and we made, there were recommendations, I mean, we addressed Chapter 17, which is the part of municipal code that we normally deal with, but there were recommendations in that ordinance to Chapter, what, three? There was other iterations that finally went to council that were beyond Chapter 17 of our municipal code. So that I have a feeling that this is codified as far as the finance department is. I mean, it would be nice to have some of that pulled into the briefing here, but to me, it's, those notices, and when you start putting a lien on a property, there's got to be a code, a code that you reference to when you do that.
I don't remember us discussing that, but it's been a while since we had this.
I know it has been a couple of years, but I remember it was Chapter three. There was several other things that we looked at when we crafted this entire ordinance, along with the boarding house envelope over the top of it, and then through another ordinance next to it called Silver Living Homes. It was a fun time, but I think Chapter three or Chapter four was in there, was the business side of it that the council had also approved. We didn't, we recommended going forward, that they look at that area, and I think that part of it was presented to council.
Okay. Senator, did you have another comment?
Yeah, well, my recommendation to the applicant is to go to the City Council and ask them to table the item, and at the same time, ask them to see if they are willing to expand the code requirement, code amendment to include your situation, considering your extraordinary circumstance. And if the council is sympathetic to that, then maybe they can do that. They can table it, and they can come back to look at it, appeal. I think that's procedurally possible. And alternatively, if there's an investment, a bank, a financial issue, there is alternative amortization extension available to you, and that's another route you can pursue. So that is my recommendation to you.
Very, very quick. I did glance through the, through the TOT code, and while it's just a layperson glance of that, I see no reference to the 14-day judgment notice in there that has to be issued. And I would echo Commissioner Wu's statement, which is, this needs to be a policy decision that's made from the City Council to either grant discretion or not, but we do have three very basic steps that we have in front of us, and you have to follow that. And absent there being some defects in the application of the TOT ordinance, I don't see how I can disagree with what you guys are saying here. So, sorry, it took me a while to get...
That's why we have discussions, so. Did you?
Would you make a motion?
Yeah, I think so. It looks like we're pretty through discussion. Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd be happy.
Okay.
I'd like to move the Planning Commission to adopt Resolution Number PC 18-027, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, denying the appeal APSTLU 18-508, and upholding the Community Development Director's denial of the nonconforming short-term lodging unit STLU amortization extension permit number 18-368 prohibiting the continued operation of the STLU at 228 West Mariposa Unit 2.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Kozinski. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Our next item is 8F, Appeal of Denial of Nonconforming Short-Term Lodging Unit Amortization Extension, STLU 18-516.
Carl Steele, senior planner, again here on this one. Good evening, vice chair and commissioners. Item 8F is the appeal of denial of nonconforming short-term lodging unit amortization extension, APSTLU 18-516. So we've already talked about the ordinance. This is the location map for this item at 259 Avenida Granada. There are other, both existing conforming and nonconforming STLUs located in the area. The downtown allowed area is shown there in blue, just outside, and this is the street view of the subject site. There's a big tree in front there, but the arrow points to the structure in the back with the three units. So, here's the permit checklist again, with certain requirements previously referenced for an STLU. If the STLU fails to meet any of these requirements, the STLU ordinance requires denial of the extension. In this case, the applicant did not meet the any violations of the municipal code were cured within 30 days of notice. We'll talk about that. So, with regard to the subject property, records show the following timeline for an illegal fourth unit on the property. Code compliance informed the owner of a violation in May of 2016. The owner received an extension to try to rectify the violation in June of 2016. In September 2016, code compliance mailed the final notice informing the owner of a continued violation. Plans were submitted by the owner in October of 2016, and corrections were issued by the billing division in November and December of 2016. Plans were approved and the billing permit issued in February 2016, or 2017, I'm sorry, and the final demo inspection occurred the following month. In summary, the appellant violated the municipal code by failing to commence action to cure the violation within 30 days of notice. Although it's challenging to cure a violation entirely within 30 days, the appellant did not make a good-faith effort to rectify the violation in a timely fashion. The correction notice was originally sent in May, and the appellant did not submit until October after receiving the final notice, and you're looking at about a 10-month process there at the final demo inspection. This untimely cured violation eliminated the appellant's good standing to receive an amortization extension. To be deemed in good standing, the appellant would need to prove that the violation did not occur, or the violation did not go uncured for more than 30 days. Therefore, staff recommends the commission determine the project is exempt from CEQA, and that the commission uphold the Community Development Director's denial and adopt PC Resolution 18-028 to deny the application. concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a one question. If you can go back to the timeline of the events, when was the STLU permit approved?
They previously had an STLU in 2015.
2015?
Yeah, that was noted in the staff report, I think it was the previous year.
What? Did they get it? So this correction was noted by the staff when they applied for a permit?
Under the new ordinance, correct, in 2016, and staff was made aware of the illegal fourth unit at that time.
So after the final inspection, did the staff issue them a permit?
An additional permit?
A STLU permit?
Yes.
When was that issued?
The originally, they originally were already permitted.
You said after final inspection on March 3rd, 2017?
That was the demo of the illegal fourth unit.
Right.
So they were already permitted with their STLUs at that time.
They were already permitted.
They had three STLUs, and they filed for amortization extensions to keep them.
So they had an initial permit, which was issued in 2015?
They had already had them permitted, yeah.
Okay, in 2017, after March 9th, were they issued a different permit?
No, the March 9th is just the demo permit for the fourth illegal unit. They were still operating their STLUs. That didn't change that.
Okay, thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, so, I want to make sure I've got the timeline, seems pretty important, right? And maybe legal can weigh in on this, too, just a little bit. So, they have 30 days to cure, which I read the notes and heard your statement that some of it is, it's difficult to cure some of this within 30 days, but maybe plans, I mean, the plans being submitted seems like the step in a first direction towards a cure, correct?
Correct. Commissioner Tally, typically with code compliance, we would request people to submit plans within that timeframe.
So here's, so here's my question. I want to make sure that we're solid on this one, because they have 30 days. So the original notice was sent on May 5th.
Correct.
But then there was an extension that was granted, and then there was another extension that was granted, maybe one extension, but then the final notice that was sent on September 26th. So when does the 30-day clock start? Does it start with the final notice, because everything else has been an extension? Or does it start on May 5th?
I think I defer to council on that. Cecilia, if they want to chime in?
Right, because now you're 20 days to the October 18th, submittal date of plans, right?
Okay, I can address this. So typically, if we send someone a notice of correction, and we identify a timeframe for compliance, and they contact us, and they notify us... for compliance, and they contact us, and they notify us that that timeframe, 15 days, 20 days, 30 days, isn't enough time, and they request an extension, then the clock starts from the date of the extension. So we'll give them a new date, and then tell them they have 20 days from that date. So when we issued the extension on June 7, they had 30 days from June 7. So that would have taken them, let's say theoretically, to July 7. So they would have had to have cured their violation, and when we say cure the violation, at least submit plans, at least submit demo plans by August 7. And we didn't receive plans until October, which was several months later.
So what was the final notice? What was, so was there a notice that was sent on June 7 then?
There was. On June 7, they were granted an extension. So their new deadline was in July.
And no other extension beyond that?
No, there was no other extension beyond that. And code compliance sent them emails. They, you know, they tried to follow up, what's happening with your project, what's going on with your permit, we've got this case. And then we sent them a final notice. So once we send somebody a final notice, we'll give them a certain amount of time to comply, and then if they don't comply, we will start fining them. So this property did not get a fine, but they were given continual notices and extensions to comply with the regulations.
July 7 is the 30-day expiration of the extension?
That's correct. Yes.
So that's the date that we're using?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Don?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh. Any other questions for staff? All right. Would the appellant like to come up? You have 10 minutes to address the commission.
Do I need the green card? No. Okay. Hi, my name is John McClendon. Been a city attorney myself for about 30 years. I've known Scott for that long, back when we both had hair. And I've heard a lot of stuff here that's just flat-out factually false, improvably false, and I'd like to go through this with you. There are three points I'd like to make here. The first point, in order to make it, I'm going to have to pull back the curtain on what went on with this lawsuit. I'm also the attorney that sued you, the city. I represented the Vacation Rental Alliance on this. Worked with Scott and his partner Alicia on putting this together. It was a tough thing. It was like herding butterflies. He had his client's interests, I had mine, and we went through two days with a judge in the Superior Court in Orange County to get this through. One of the things we finally decided was, okay, all of the members of the properties that are represented by the members of the Alliance, those members' properties would be, we use theological terms, would be saved. They would get the 10-year extension. And we also talked about a five-year extension on top of that. This is the list. This is from the city's attorney that was sent to me in February. And as you can see, there's nearly 100 listed on this. What happened was, came back and said, you know what, the optics on that are not going to work in this community. So what we're going to do is we're going to take what we call the Lucky 19 in the RL zone, and we're going to put them in the agreement, and then we're going to give a "you apply for it, you get it" extension, eight-year extension on the original 10 years. And so that way, we don't have to put them on a list, don't have to put them in the settlement agreement. They just have to do that, and we'll do that by amending the ordinance. So what I have here is I have some stuff I'd like you to take a look at. Okay, again, I'm pulling the curtain back here. If you look at the first two pages, what this shows is this was a penultimate of the agreement. And like I said, we originally had the 10 plus the 5. And the way it worked here is, as you can see on page 5, you had this automatic, and by the way, I'm the one that put the ministerial in there, because my client said, we won't sign it unless it's ministerial. There can't be any discretion here. And they assured us, that's what we'll get. What happened here, and you can see from the strikeouts here, is basically, we created the confusion for Cecilia, okay? We should have crossed out that black there about in good standing, on the second thing that made good standing a retrospective look back, and we didn't do that, okay? What we had was, we had that you apply for it, you get it for the first eight years. If you keep your nose clean after those first eight years, then you can apply for an additional five-year extension. However, there's a look back on that for the prior eight years, and you have to show this good standing here, and that's what was in C, okay? There was no look back on the original eight-year extension. And there was never any intent to do that, and that can be shown by, and this is Cecilia's own chart, these are the RLs, the Lucky 19 that are listed here. There are eight of them that had legacy violations, and nevertheless, they were brought in. That was the understanding that we worked under. So I think, I was initially a little steamed at Cecilia on this thing, and I think maybe we lawyers created the confusion here a bit for, but it was never the intent for there to be this look back and do this. What happened was, this definition for the five-year extension, which later on Scott came back and said, John, that's not going to fly with my client, you got to talk your client out of that, which I successfully did, that got collapsed into the prior one, such that it has this confusing look back thing. So my first point is, the whole intent of this was never, ever for any of these people to get anything other than an automatic extension. The people that are on this list, and this is the list from the city attorney from February, which my client is right there at the top on page 2, his units, this was supposed to be automatic. Okay, let's say for argument's sake that you don't accept that. Okay, you say, well, bad scrivviness or not on the part of the lawyers, creating the ambiguity, there's the 30 days. What I want to point out on that is, and I think somebody here keyed on it, is where does that clock start? And this is where you had it starting here with this May 5 notice, okay? This is from the city's. My client got back to them and said, I've been out of circulation for a few weeks because I had general surgery for melanoma at UCLA. City, God bless this person, this city's got a heart, she says, dear David, thank you for your email. I'm so sorry you had melanoma, but it's great that your cancer free now. I will work with you on the timeline. Just let me know how much time you'll need to submit plans and obtain a demo permit to remove the fourth unit. This is what the city is calling the 30-day extension. Do you see anything about a July in this? I'll work with you on a timeline, just let me know how much time you'll need? There isn't. I've also prepared for you a timeline that shows that my client was entirely diligent here, and this is where I think discretion is slipping in here on this thing of lack of due diligence, lack of good faith. The timeline shows my client working diligently, because this wasn't a thing with an extra bed in a laundry room, being rented out as an extra bedroom or something like that, something easily cured. This is something talking structure that takes more time to do that. So my client diligently went about retaining an architect, doing all this, working with the city. Most of this delay you see here is, it's sitting there in the city's planning department with the plans being approved. We understand that takes time, and as soon as the plans were approved in February, boom, they get on this, and a little over a month, they get the thing done. So they're diligent. Now, here's the other thing that we also have, is that somebody else keyed in on this. After this date, they granted another permit for each of these three units. So as of about May 2017, everything was good. We were all good, turning square corners, the new permit had been issued, but now we're getting tagged on this weird gotcha on something that probably shouldn't have been there. The last thing, and this is my third point here, is, and I heard this, and Christina, you're a marvelous attorney, but I disagree with you here, and that's that you do have discretion here for three reasons. First, read the ordinance itself. The ordinance says that it's the community development director who's bound as a ministerial thing. I would have never, as one of the people that had to write this thing and finalize it, never put that you guys or anyone else are bound by that. And secondly, I think that goes against your code, because this is your own city code right here, 17.12.140E, scope of review, the hearing, the body hearing the appeal shall not be limited to the issues raised on the appeal, but rather shall be entitled to review new evidence and to consider all elements of the appealed action. If there's one word that'll describe that, that's discretion. And in fact, look at page 5 on your staff report. Staff report says you have discretion. It's right there in the staff report, and it's following this language about the new evidence on this. Now, I would just, I don't have much time here, but I have my client here that would like to give you a little background on the, what happened in terms of the timeline. If you could come up, Dr. Nealon?
Okay. Now, these 10 minutes are your client's time, so you're almost out of time, just so you know.
Hi, I'm Catherine Nealon, and my brother's here also, and we're the owners of the building. It's owned by AJN Corporation, which is really just a small, closely-held family corporation. My dad bought, well, we first started coming to San Clemente in the 60s. He bought a property here, and he didn't like to spend a lot of money, so we pretty much spent all our vacations here. We grew up in Los Angeles. And he bought this building in 1988. He was still under construction, and he met the contractor, and he was in love with San Clemente, and so he bought this building, and he rented out the two lower units, and he left the top one empty for us to use. So when it was built, there was a little room at the back, and it's, I wrote, there's a letter, we have a letter, anyway, oh, time is out. Should I, I'll just briefly?
Just finish the last couple of sentences and wrap it up, please.
Okay, so there was a room at the back, and somehow, even though it wasn't in the original plans, it was kind of my dad's hideaway, and he never rented it, and he came down here and walked on the beach and prayed and whatever. He was kind of a monk every Saturday here. And we never knew that wasn't legal. I mean, it was there like that from when it was built, and it had never been rented. So anyway, that's the kind of back history. My dad died in 2013. We inherited management of this. I'm a physician in San Francisco. My mom has dementia. My brother moved in with her when my dad died. And we decided that the building needed work in 2015. We did, we?
And I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, great.
You've got one sentence to finish it out, by all means.
Okay, one sentence is that we initially planned to just do a renovation for $220,000, but then it occurred to us that we wouldn't be able to use it. My sister wanted us to definitely rent all three units, and so we would never be able to come to San Clemente and stay in the apartment again. And that's when I met Brad, and we decided to do it as a vacation rental. So instead of spending $220,000, we spent closer, well, we spent $600,000 to do air conditioning, and we put in washer dryers.
I'm going to have to cut you off, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have a question for the, any questions for the applicant or the attorney? Michael?
Yes. I do have a question for, could be the applicant as well as potentially the staff. I'm a little confused about the notice. Extension was granted on June 7. The applicant is suggesting that an email was the notice that they received, that was the only notice, and I don't see the actual letter in our packet. That's part one. Part two was the three permits that the applicant stated were issued after March 9, 2017. Do we have any record of those permits being issued? Maybe that's also a staff, the applicant could produce that, or perhaps staff could confirm whether or not permits were actually issued after the final inspections.
Thank you, Commissioner. I can address your first question with respect to the email from code compliance on June 7 that granted the extension. I asked for a copy of it. Mr. McClendon showed it to me, and he is correct. We did not specify a date in that extension.
Okay, thank you. Can I follow up? No, it was part two. That was the three permits. Were three permits issued? Do we have any record of that after demo? The demo final inspection, were the three permits issued?
Yeah, all the permits were issued and finalized.
Okay, thank you. Can I follow up with Cecilia?
Chris?
Have a question.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead, please.
Since there was no date in the extension that was granted, the final notice would serve as the notice under the language?
Yes, I would agree with you there. Correct.
Thank you.
Jason?
So, real quick before you get down, with that being said, would that change the decision that you would have made on this?
Absolutely. Had I known that there was not a date in the extension, we wouldn't be here tonight.
So with that being said, does that, is there, should we table this matter?
Well, the appeal is still before the council, so there are a couple, for the commission, so there are a couple of options. Staff can request that the matter be withdrawn, so that they can work with the applicant, similar to the initial, the first item, STLU appeal, to determine that there was in fact compliance. Or alternatively, the commission can make findings of fact based upon the newly presented evidence, which is not exercising discretion, it's exercising your obligation as a fact-finder to say, there's been new evidence presented at this hearing, and based upon the new evidence presented and from the applicant, together with the acknowledgement from staff, that there are findings that would support granting the appeal, the factual findings.
That's probably the faster track. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Zen, did you have a?
Yeah, question. The applicant stated that in September 2017, three STLU permits issued by the city of San Clemente for Unit A, B, and C. Can the staff confirm it, or can the applicant produce them?
I had them in my hands a few minutes ago, and I'm...
Did you go check my documents, am I wrong?
Would you? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, the staff just said there was no new permit issued after March 2017.
But that's wrong.
She just, no, Cecilia's...
Cecilia just confirmed so.
They were issued.
There are currently three valid short-term lodging unit permits on the property.
When were they issued?
They were issued after March 9, 2017.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Chris, you had a question?
Not a question. So based on the new information received from staff?
Well, let's keep it, we're still in the question period here, and then we'll do the public hearing, and then once we open it for discussion, we'll, you know, I think, take up what you might want to take up, so. All right, if there are no more questions, then I will open the public hearing, and I do have one card. Brad Dendel. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Brad? Great.
And you did say it correctly. Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioners, I'm Bradley Dendelk with Beachside Vacation Rentals, property manager of 259 Avenida Granada, AB&amp;C. I'm also a direct signatory to the settlement agreement for the San Clemente Vacation Rental Alliance, which I'm a member, versus the City of San Clemente litigation, had firsthand involvement with all the negotiations in this regard. Our San Clemente-based company operates 30 furnished rentals here, and as city staff can attest, we maintain a sterling record and reputation with them, including revenue and code compliance over the last 10 years, and it's been a great experience working with staff. As you may expect, I would have never knowingly signed an agreement where any of my properties would not have been included. I was confident that since we had a record of no violations and of valid permits for this property issued after the construction was completed, there was no reason that would not be automatically included. During our negotiation structuring the settlement of the litigation, property as well as others were initially going to be listed in the settlement. were initially going to be listed in the settlement agreement for an automatic eight-year extension. However, city staff subsequently told us that it would be better if we instead listed just the alliance members, nineteen low-density RL units in the agreement, and amended the STLU ordinance so that all the alliance members' medium-density units would obtain eight-year extensions. Simply by applying for them, provided they were in good standing at the time they submitted their applications. To assure alliance members that city staff would not exercise any subjective discretion in processing the applications, we wanted the approval to be ministerial, so that a compliant, non-three-strike property would automatically be included without unknown-to-be-determined criteria that somehow disqualify them. From the staff report, we understand staff's interpretation of the ordinance's thirty-day cure language to mean any violation, no matter how far back that was not cured in thirty days. Though we will show that is not the case for this property, this interpretation was not in any way what the parties, alliance members, or the city staff intended for the settlement. For example, some of the lucky nineteen RL, STU units had legacy violations, and yet the city staff had no problem with those units being granted extensions in the settlement agreement, since they were not in violation at the time of the settlement. That being said, since A, B, and C of two-five-nine Avenue de Granada were fully compliant with the TOT planning and building at the time of reapplication, demonstrated by the permits which we had and she talked about, and since there have never been violations of STU permit administration, trash, noise, parking, or TOT payments for these units, we have demonstrated this property has earned the trust to receive permit renewal and continue to serve the visitors and residents of San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a card from David Nealon. And are you the applicant?
I am, yeah.
I think that you've had, the applicant's already granted ten minutes, so-
Can I just point out one last little point here of the thirty days and what was going on?
Well, as the applicant, you've had, you know, the time, so let's, so I prefer to, you know, follow the order, so. Having no other cards, I will close the public hearing and take a little indulgent, indulgence as a chair. We obviously heard some interesting things, and staff's comment is very interesting. I think, in general, it's good to have staff make these decisions if they can. I think it's a good process. There's been some evidence that's been shown to us at the podium, but we haven't seen it, nor has it been validated, but staff can do that. My particular feeling would be to continue the item and allow staff to look at that closely and make a further decision on it. So that would be my preference.
You're looking at me. Jason. So, so I guess I don't disagree with that sentiment unless we have clear and overarching view from staff that we should just dispense with the matter now so we don't take their time. So I guess I'd ask Cecilia if she could opine, if, if she would like to make, us to make a finding of fact based upon this, or what makes, what is the most efficient way to, to dispense with, with an outcome?
You know, I, I think both could be done very quickly. I have no reason to believe that the email that Mr. McLendon provided isn't accurate and absolutely correct. So based on that information, if the planning commission wished to reverse the decision of the director, we could issue the STLU permit within the week. If you wanted to table the item, we'd probably still take that same period of time, a week, to reevaluate the issue, rescind the director's decision, and issue the approved STLU permit.
Yes, can I, just with respect to the process, it would, if the commission desires to reverse the decision of the director, it would need to do so by resolution with findings. That would, I would then recommend that the matter be continued to allow staff to come back with the new resolution with new factual findings. And given how much time that would take even to your next meeting, it may be more expedient, if time is of the essence here, to go the staff route, let staff look at it and rescind its letter, because otherwise, staff's gonna have to bring back a new resolution. I don't believe that the resolution before you has the factual findings to support granting the appeal. I'll defer to staff on that, but you would need a resolution to do that.
Once it's tabled, does it automatically drop?
No.
No, it doesn't.
It has to bring it back.
Someone needs to drop it from our future agenda?
Well, I would recommend that you table it, allow staff to rescind its letter, and then staff could come back and ask that the matter, I imagine the applicant will withdraw their appeal, and then the matter would be taken off of your agenda. But my point is that if you take an action to grant the appeal, there aren't any findings in a resolution to support that at this time. Is that correct? I'm assuming that's correct. And you have to do it by resolution.
So either way, we would be continuing the item.
Right.
So that actually makes me wonder, though, because if we grant an appeal, let's say we had granted an appeal tonight, we don't have a resolution that may dictate those findings, so are we actually able to grant an appeal?
What you would be doing is you would be continuing the matter and asking staff to bring back a resolution with findings granting the appeal.
It's stationed in the staff report, page five.
Right.
Alternative number two, plan a determined light of noon additional information provided by the appellant, and be in good standing, and it goes on and on. This actually requires this hearing to be continued-
Right.
-to allow staff to draft a new resolution to make the findings.
Fair enough. So, I'm, I'm good with tabling this.
Can we ask the staff in the future if this appeal prepares us two versions of resolution, one to sustain the denial, another one to reverse it in the future? So we can just make a quick decision and be down with it?
I don't, I just know that we want to do that.
I like that. I like being able to, we should be able to make a decision. We shouldn't be guided.
But if I may add, that if all of this was based on different facts, that's one thing, but if those facts do not exist, or they do exist, which would cause it to not come here in the first place, why would we, why would we do that? So, could it come back as a consent item?
The public hearing is closed, so you wouldn't be taking, you wouldn't be holding another public hearing, but you would have to bring it back and take your action, when you have a resolution that supports your decision before you for consideration.
Well, let me ask, is, I mean, it sounds like there's pretty, some consensus. Is there any, any issue with continuing this item? Let staff sort out the details and validate some things, and then we'll let the chips fall where they may?
I think the facts are very clear, and we should just give the staff direction to reverse it, whether technically or residential.
No, it's not up to staff to reverse it, that's up to us.
Yeah, we, we should, well, staff can-
But if they, if staff withdraws the denial, then there's no point, there's no reason to, to reverse it.
Actually, I think the point that Commissioner Wu was making is that we should, we should determine that in light of new and additional information provided by the applicant, that this STLU is determined to be in good standing, and as such, this would require this hearing to be continued to allow staff to draft a new resolution. And then, in that intervening time, if the director wants to revoke her earlier decision and put a new decision out, then the appeal can be withheld.
I think the city attorney has-
I think that's exactly right. What you would do is be giving the director time to reconsider the decision that's been appealed. You could also remand it with direction. Those would be your two options.
I like that term.
I think what you, then, then you can remand it to her for, for further consideration, to be appealed up if it's not resolved at that level. So those would be, I think, two options before you.
All right. Does someone, does someone have a motion? Sure.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we remand this to the director to reevaluate her decision.
As a continued item?
As a continued item.
Second.
To a time indefinite.
Did you get that?
Tabled.
Tabled, yes. Tabled?
Tabled.
Okay.
Remanded and then tabled.
That's exactly what you wanted to do. You don't want to continue it to a date, sir. You just want to table it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tallis, second by Brown. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Could do.
So we are jumping back to item eight. So now we turn to item eight A. Regulation of leaf blowers. And Planner Amy Stoneich is going to, once again, address us. Here you go. Thank you.
Good evening, commission, or Chair and members of the commission.
Can I ask you to hold on one minute?
Yes.
Excuse me, in the back of the room, we still have business to conduct, so if you could take the discussion outside, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you, Chair. This is a presentation on leaf blowers. In March of two thousand eighteen, the city council received a report on leaf blowers and directed staff to, number one, reach out to stakeholders, to identify restrictions from code compliance, to research other cities' restrictions on decibel levels, to analyze how they deal with hours of operation and gas versus electric blowers, to consider leaf vacuums, and also consider picking or sweeping up leaves. And finally, to review the potential model of Dana Point's ordinance. So the city's current, currently regulates fugitive dust control and noise control. It also exempts some government operations and city weed abatement activity. However, it does not clearly restrict the use of leaf blowers. Leaf blowers have been around since the nineteen seventies. The use of blowers was accelerated in California because of our drought conditions. Since that time, some California cities have implemented restrictions. However, only six have outright banned them. Since their inception, the three main concerns have been that leaf blowers, number one, produce exhaust emissions, two, they resuspend dust, and three, they generate high noise In two thousand, the California Air Resources Board, the ARB, released a report on the potential health and environmental impacts of leaf blowers and alternative leaf blower technology. The ARB noted that the exhaust standards that are already in place have significantly reduced exhaust and carbon monoxide emissions beyond the required standards. It's important to note that the Air Resources Board does not have legislation that mandates the control of noise emissions, but they did note that quieter blowers would reduce noise exposures and negative impacts on bystanders. So while we have legislation, legislative restrictions on air quality from California Air Resources Board, South Coast, and the South Coast Air Quality Management District, cities typically enact their own restrictions on noise. As I discussed in my previous slide, the city has restrictions on noise control. However, it's not specific to leaf blowers. Noise control can be difficult to enforce, especially when it comes to intermittent or ambient noise. If our code compliance officers have to use their noise meters, it becomes difficult with time, the calibration of the noise meters, and accuracy. So, in the report before you, it outlines a certification from the National Standards Institute, or ANSI. They provide a manufacturer's certification measured at fifty feet. This certification typically provides a sticker, you can see here in the photo, on each leaf blower. And I'd have to clarify that this is on commercial leaf blowers, not necessarily residential. In this case, it shows sixty-five decibels. I'm sure you can see it all from there. So why do we use leaf blowers if they're such a nuisance to bystanders? Well, I've done some inquiries with private landscapers, leaf blower retailers, and with city maintenance crews who use leaf blowers on a daily basis. They've expressed the importance of using gas blowers to remove clippings, to dislodge leaves, clean sidewalks, and remove debris on large recreational courts and parking lots. So with the use of glass, excuse me, gas blowers, they are able to do this quickly and without the use of water. I was also informed by each of these stakeholders that the alternative cleanup methods would extend their cleanup two to five times. So now a one-hour job becomes a five-hour job. So it might be safe to say that the extended time for cleanup would ultimately cost consumers more money. In drafting an ordinance for San Clemente, we understood from residents that there were concerns about air quality and noise control. We received direction from the city council to proceed with certain parameters that included reaching out to local landscapers who used leaf blowers. It was also important to us to involve our public works department, who regularly depend on the use of leaf blowers to quickly and efficiently clean up city parks and the right-of-way. We also checked with our, other cities and their implementation success and failures. Our goal in drafting the ordinance was to implement reliable restrictions, to minimize the impacts of leaf blowers on bystanders, to ensure ease of enforcement, and ensure the ease of compliance used by private property owners and the public. So before I go through the new ordinance, I just quickly want to touch on the big questions, and that is gas-powered versus electric-powered. So as I mentioned previously, we talked to the landscapers, retailers, and public works about leaf blowers. Here's what they had to say about them. The gas-powered was preferred. Electric tended to be a lower performance, and that was because they had less power. It was expensive to replace batteries and invest in them, because it took multiple to complete the same job that it would take to do a gas blower. This also ultimately tends to be the same noise and air impacts, because my, what I've been told is that the noise is coming at a high pitch, not necessarily from the motor itself, but from the blowing portion out the nozzle. Another alternative that was asked were leaf vacuums. So we inquired about those as well. And ultimately, it turns out that they're about as noisy, although you don't get the air impacts, but they were overall less efficient, because you had to go back and also remove leaves and debris by hand, since they don't typically suck up everything the same way that a gas blower would. So the draft ordinance before you tonight will be, will, excuse me, will incorporate additional definitions. It includes reference to leaf blower operation on the specific noises, and it includes restrictions that apply to the use of leaf blowers. Specifically, this new chapter will include regulation to address early morning operation. allowable hours of operation are nine AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday. It will also require leaf blowers to have affixed a sound decibel level that does not exceed sixty-five dB, measured at fifty feet. This applies to commercial only, and they would also need to include the business name and other contact information, including a business license. The ordinance also takes into account that anyone utilizing a leaf blower should operate it so as not to deposit debris on neighboring properties and to dispose of it properly. So with that, staff is recommending that the code be found exempt from CEQA, and that we make a recommendation to the council to approve the ordinance before you through Resolution PC eighteen oh-two-five. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Jason, start with you.
I've got a couple of questions here. So my first question is, I think at the start of the presentation, you, you talked about the fact that you went out and talked to various stakeholders.
Correct.
Right? Right? And so I see we've talked to the city maintenance crew. We've talked to various retailers, and we've talked to landscapers. But what about talking to the guy that takes care of his lawn on Sunday afternoon, or Saturday morning, or Saturday at 7:00 o'clock at night, or 5:00 o'clock at night? Did we talk to them?
Didn't reach out to individuals.
Because they use those too, correct? I brought my personal leaf blower as, you know, an exhibit here. It seems like we missed an entire subset of people. And I don't know how many homes we have in San Clemente, but we have a lot, right? And a lot of those have lawns. And not everyone uses a lawn service, do they?
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, we talked about noise. And I think you referenced it in the draft ordinance here that carves out leaf blowers as only being able to use, be used between the hours of, what is it, 8:00 and, or 9:00 to 5:00, right? 9:00 to 5:00.
That's the proposed ordinance, correct?
Correct. But somebody can use a jackhammer from 7:00 to 9:00, correct?
Correct.
And jackhammers probably louder than a leaf blower? Are we restricting those at all?
No, we were directed by council to address leaf blowers. But I do recognize that there are other devices that are used.
Okay. And so then let me turn to the definition of a leaf blower that's put in here. So I think the definition that I read is, "It means any portable power equipment designed or operated to produce a current of air by fuel, electricity, or other means to push, propel, or blow dust, leaves, grass clippings, cuttings, and trimmings." Okay? So would a lawnmower do that? Because it has an exhaust and it ejects grass clippings, which is what sometimes you use the leaf blower to clean up, right? So would a lawnmower do that?
Yes.
So would a lawnmower be prohibited from, except for the hours of 9:00 to 5:00?
No, because it's not a leaf blower.
But a leaf blower has been defined as a device that pushes, propels, or blows dust, leaves, or grass clippings, or cuttings. And it has a blade that produces a current of air that ejects the grass, right? So wouldn't it potentially fall underneath that definition?
Presumably, yes.
Okay. And my last question before we get into discussion is, why is there a carve-out for city staff? Because arguably, you know, they were one of the primary stakeholders that you talked to. They use these more than anybody else. Why isn't there a carve-out for, you know, other large landscaping groups, golf courses, and such? Why is city staff exempted?
That's a good question. So I did check with our Public Works Department, and Tom Bonniget is here to address that as well. But essentially, they have to be up early to clear out the parks before people use them. So typically, events start and are scheduled within their parks very early in the morning. So they do go out early to clean the parks in order to have them available for people to come and use. Also, utilizing, cleaning up the street and sidewalk, it's very inconvenient for users in the public when they're blowing at hours of the day while someone might be sipping their coffee on the sidewalk. And that's why we did not apply it to them. It also, our ordinance exempted city work and weed abatement as well. So our own city work did seem to lend itself to be exempt from that as well.
So did council ask you to exempt city staff?
No.
Because I was looking at the video from that, and it almost appeared like some of the complaints were coming from some of the city activities. At least that maybe that was an improper reading.
From the video?
Yeah, of when city was, or I'm sorry, when city was talking about this issue, right? It was a, there was city staff concerns that they had as well. So I'm just curious where that kind of came out, if it was just a request internally to exempt city staff or if that was from the council.
We were directed to speak with stakeholders, and it seemed appropriate to look at our own. We actually did, in the prior city council meeting, discuss leaf blowers being used and whether our Public Works Department was going to use gas or invest in the electric. So there was some discussion as to our own city. So yes, I did look into them as a stakeholder and an important part of our ordinance.
And I lied. I have one follow-up question, which was placed on the dais tonight. Thank you very much for putting this together, which was the complaints that were related to leaf blowers over the last two years. And I've got a, I was emailed a much more verbose description, and I think is in front of everybody here. But there were 11 complaints over the last two years. And just because there was a complaint doesn't mean that there was a notice or action given, right? I mean, somebody can complain about anything, whether or not it has veracity to it. You're welcome to look at that. Do you have that?
No, I'm just wondering. No, not this. This one. Right, I have that one.
Commissioner Tally requested the details associated with each of them.
He got special handling again.
Well, I wanted to see what these complaints were. And, you know, candidly, when I read through some of these, they're, you know, diatribes against, you know, all sorts of things, right? And leaf blowers are part of it. But I wonder if we're trying to solve for a problem that doesn't really exist. Because we've got 11 potential complaints. Some of these were construction-related, not leaf blower-related, in two years.
And do you have any other questions?
That's all I have.
Yeah, and that's a good thing for discussion.
Sorry, I apologize.
No worries. Michael?
Well, I'm glad that our Public Works Director is here to comment on it. It'd be good to get a perspective from somebody that's really out there and understands the complexities and potential costs and impacts of changing our position on this. So I wouldn't mind hearing a little from him as well. But I do have one question for you, Amy, about the noise and pollution. Let's start with the noise. In your exhibit, at the back of the end of the report, it was a comprehensive list of jurisdictions that are having, you know, they've got different degrees of banning going on. They've got all-out, they've got, you know, partial, they've got certain days, certain times. And of those, was the ban, do you know if the ban was more based on noise? Or was it based on air pollution, or both?
As far as why these cities decided to?
Maybe an all-out ban. Would you think, generally speaking, was it just because of noise? Or was it more pollution? I guess the reason I'm asking this is because we've got a two-pronged issue here. We've got noise.
Right.
That's going to be emitted from either electric or gas. And then we've got the pollution, which would be just the gas-powered. And so it would be the bigger, you know, globally speaking, what's the bigger issue? Is it pollution? Or is it noise?
So many of them are beach cities. I don't know if that explains anything, but other than, it could have been typically both. But I have to look at each one and go through each individual report as to why they did it.
Okay. Well, I just did my own research and found some information that would suggest that mostly noise, but, you know, the pollution's an issue. And we do have, just to be clear, we do have a noise ordinance in play that would apply to any source of noise, whether it be a lawnmower, a jackhammer, automobile, music, whatever it is. It's noise. So can we hear from Tom Bonniget?
Sure.
To support or not? What's being proposed here?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. And can I ask for a little guidance? Is there any particular angle that you're interested in myself addressing?
Yes, I appreciate it. Your position on this matter, as it would relate to an all-out ban of gas-powered equipment versus, you know, handraking, vacuums, electric versus gas?
Well, first of all, I think the staff report pretty accurately summarized the big picture and the feedback that my team provided to the Planning Division. Whether and what direction we ultimately go clearly is your recommendation, and it's a policy decision that the council will make. And whatever that is, we will abide by it, of course. But that being said, the reason in our line of work that the gas-powered leaf blower is the predominant tool is as it was described in the staff report. It is the most cost-effective tool in our toolbox to maintain large areas and clean them of debris. And that's not only true for our city maintenance operations. It's true for the contractors we hire to do that. It's true for construction contractors who will use those leaf blowers to, in the course of street construction projects, to get gravel and so forth. And so to go anywhere else just adds an element of cost. And that's where the trade-off is and the policy decision that you and the council will need to weigh. Again, the staff report, I think, pretty clearly summarized that even going to battery-powered, you know, that doesn't necessarily take care of a noise issue. It helps, you know, if the concern is about emissions. But it's also still blowing things around, and you have to take some care to try and not direct material onto properties where you don't want to. To ban them outright and go to hand sweeping, yeah, we can do it, but then that exponentially increases the effort and the time to do it. Really, it just comes down to, but that's just money. And so how do we want to maintain these areas? Can we go back to sweeping and vacuuming? Yes, it can be done. It's just, it just makes things exponentially more difficult because of the scale that we deal with. So, you know, when we had our druthers, we would follow the lines of the planning, or the report, and stick with gas-powered equipment. I will say that, and the noise, I think, gets addressed a little bit better with the technology and equipment. You heard the 65 decibel limit. We have just entirely switched over to new maintenance contractors on a range of our services. And they are all now using, their blowers are meeting that 65 dB A limit. So we've confirmed that we're doing that already. So I think that's a step in the right direction. But anything after that, you know, we're prepared to follow whatever direction. But we do that because it's most cost-effective. That's the bottom line. Am I kind of giving you perspective on our?
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes.
Are you done?
Yes, I am.
So, Staff, the Planning type is recommending allowing blowers for everybody in the city except your organization from like 9:00 to 5:00. And you're, but I think the way I read you this task report, you're, there is no time restriction living on your organization.
That's correct.
So you could be blowing at 3:00 o'clock in the morning?
No.
Not the fact that you wouldn't, but the ordinance would allow you to do that?
I don't think so, because there are other provisions in the same ordinance. There are general noise provisions. And so I think 7:00, 7:00 a.m. is a magic number as well. But our own practice, we're out there and we hear it. I mean, I get the complaints, and I'm doing the spot checks and surprise inspections on the maintenance contractors. But we, so we're trying to get in certain areas early enough before the use picks up. For example, Del Mar T-zone, and people are out. But we're not, we're trying to get, but not too early because we recognize that there are residences too. So we don't start before 7:00 a.m., but then we hit it hard, and we try and get out by 9:00 or 10:00 in a lot of these facilities and parks.
So you'd be comfortable if the ordinance included a time like 7:00 for you, the city?
Well, if the direction is to put a hard time for us, say 7:00 to 5:00 or whatever, we're okay with that. 9:00 just becomes, 9:00 o'clock in the morning start time becomes a little bit restrictive. But 7:00 is absolutely reasonable because we don't do it anyway. We recognize that's swinging the pendulum too far. If you codify that, we don't have an issue. If that's your question.
When you're guys, you're doing larger areas, I think, probably in general, than, you know, just a single residential home. When you're guys are working, how long are the blowers actually running? Is it a five-minute thing, a 30-minute thing?
Well, so the typical equipment, it's a variable, kind of, it's not, the commercial blower is a little bit different generally. I mean, you can get them as a residential owner too. But there's a motor, and it's always running, and it's kind of in a default idle. And then it can throttle up and down in its variable speed. So the operator can kick it up when he needs to, or, you know, throttle it back if he has to get finer control. Or when he takes it off, it's sort of like, you know, if you have a lawnmower, it'll go into idle mode. And so it's always on, and then it's cycling up and down, and it's getting louder and quieter as, you know, you're putting more gas to it.
So however long you're out there.
But for example, so on, we could be out there, an example, the best is downtown here in our T-zone area. We go out several times a week and try and get there usually 7:15, 7:30. We're starting at El Comunal and working our way down Del Mar. And that can take an hour, an hour and a half, and then they're out of the area. But we're not in a specific location for an hour and a half. We're sort of moving through the area. And that's true in parks, too. We'll start at a parking lot and just slowly move through and then be done. So we're never at any particular point for an extended period. Okay? If that helps you.
Yes, thank you. Jason?
So a couple more questions. Did you reach out to, since we're talking about stakeholders, and I'm thinking about the city, yeah, thank you, Tom. I'm thinking about stakeholders on this. Prior to my move, several months ago, I was on the HOA of Forester Highlands. And we have, I don't know, a couple hundred acres that we maintain. And we have a large, you know, I think, close, you know, a very large maintenance contract to maintain all of those areas. I'm sure Talega is the same. Did you reach out to those HOAs to talk to them about the impact that it would have to curtail their hours of operation? Because I know they were out, I know they're out early working on stuff from 7:00 to 8:00 on.
I reached out to their landscapers, yes.
Okay, and?
Who said that they would be happy to comply with a 9:00 a.m. start time for leaf blowers.
Are there any more questions for staff? All right, if not, we will move on to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I have two cards. The first one is from Ken Konig Schofer. And I appreciate the phonetic spelling.
Well, I'd just like to comment on the defense of gas leaf blowers that I've heard. And that defense seems to me to have been focusing upon large areas that need to be maintained. And one example of that would be the city. And I can see how cost efficiency is an important consideration there. When you're talking about very large areas, you were talking about 200 acres. I live one block north of Lyndaleane Park. You guys know what the setback is at houses there? Side setbacks, I'm sure you do. No, it's not.
Zero to 10 feet?
Yeah, something like 10 feet between houses. When we have neighbors blowing, not neighbors, but they're gardeners, blowing leaf blowers 10 feet from our house, the noise is like a jet aircraft. And it's not only one. Up and down the block. Now, I'm a retired college professor. I still teach part-time for the University of Maryland online, so I work at home. I have two teenagers at San Clemente High School that, you know, study, study very hard, both A-plus students. And these leaf blowers are going constantly. And we're not talking about 200 acres, or we're not talking about some other large space. You know, the yards in our neighborhood are about the size of where you guys are sitting. And we've got leaf blowers there, going on up and down the block, you know, multiple days a week. So noise is a real problem. So noise is a real problem. I heard 65 decibels from 50 feet. If you guys could do an ordinance to keep these blowers 50 feet from my house, that would be great. But they're not. They're 10 feet away. What's the decibel level 10 feet away? Is it five times the 65 decibels? Any physicists here that can answer that question?
I can answer that question. No, for...
Let's answer questions after the end of the public hearing, please.
Thanks for the try, anyway. But when that 65 decibels, which is not 50 feet, but which is 10 feet away, is reverberating between the walls of houses, it magnifies it even more. So I'm sympathetic with the city's argument that when the city has to maintain large areas, gas leaf blowers, okay. It's a different issue because you don't have, maybe you do have 50 feet. You have more than 50 feet for those 65 decibels. But that's not our case, you know, in our neighborhood. And furthermore, you don't have the echoes created by the building walls. So the noise problem is a different issue for what the city's uses are compared to what landscaping companies, at least in our neighborhood where the houses are so close together. It's a totally different issue. And I haven't heard that issue addressed at all. All I've heard is arguments in favor of gas blowers being used by the city for large areas. It's a completely different situation, a completely different circumstance. Those arguments don't apply at all to the situation that we have in our neighborhood. There's also issues about pollution. And I heard it mentioned, but I didn't, forgive me if I missed the details, but I don't think I heard any of the details about pollution.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is to pass to you some facts. These don't come from me. The source there is listed. And so I hope you'll take a look at this because there are serious pollution issues as well. I'm sensitive to this. I've got kids.
Thank you. I'm, you're right, you have your time. So, thank you.
Thanks.
And the last card is from Paul.
I wrote a, I showed up at the city council meeting when they were discussing the issue the first time and spoke there. I'm going to save you the long speech that I had then and just going to tell you a few things from my perspective here. About 20 residents appeared before the city council to support a full ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Not one person showed up in support of allowing leaf blowers in the city. But the city council seemed to pretty much ignore our concerns about the noise, dust, and toxic exhaust produced by these disruptive machines. Instead, the city had staff reach out to local landscapers, but really forgot to reach out to us, the 20 or so people that showed up in opposition to gas-powered leaf blowers. Nobody recontacted us and said, hey, we'd like to hear your thoughts on it. I think one of the other main points here is that the noise, dust, and exhaust from gas-powered leaf blowers cannot be confined just to one property. Okay? So you can hear these machines from up the street. You can definitely hear them from next door when you're five or 10 feet away. And if, you know, you happen to be working from home or trying to sleep or take a nap or even be in your own yard that you pay taxes for, you have to be constantly, daily disrupted by people who come in and want to get their job done as fast and, you know, with least effort as possible, but without regard for the people who could be around them. They just don't care. A lot of these people are also privately contracted and probably don't have business licenses and probably receive their money under the table. So that's pretty much tax-free. And maybe some of them are undocumented workers as well. So you have, you're almost giving the rights and the preference to the workers' convenience rather than hearing the residents who are affected directly by this in very close proximity, especially on the west side where, you know, there's 20, 30 houses within earshot that you could hear each of these people doing their business. So I'd really ask that you consider our health and our well-being as taxpayers and residents here rather than just the convenience of the maintenance workers. And it's different from large-scale operators dealing with a park or big parking lots. These are right next door to us, 5, 10 feet away. So thank you for listening and that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you. That was my last card. Does anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
Can I ask just a simple question of you?
No, you've had your time for the...
No questions possible?
No, not at this time, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll start our discussion.
Just want for the record that Paul, I guess, no last name attached, your email was forwarded by staff and we all had it, received it electronically and is also on the dius here tonight, just to let you know. Okay? I just wanted to let you know that we received your information.
Okay. Zen, I think you were next.
Okay. Well, first I'll answer the question about how loud it is about 10 feet away for any point source of noise. 50% of the distance will get you six decibels louder. So if they're at 50 feet and they're 65, 25, they would be 71, 12.5, they would be 77, at a 6, they would be 83. So at a 10 feet, you're about 79 decibels. That's quite a concept.
So is somebody that knows the answer.
No, my, I continue.
No, he's right. The math's there. It's...
It is louder.
My opinion on this thing is, I think a lawnmower is actually a big offender comparing to leaf blower. So if we want to restrict leaf blower, I want to restrict a lawnmower too. They're the same type of thing. Currently, they are allowed 7 to 6. It's much easier to just leave everything at a 7 to 6 and that's it. But if we want to restrict, restrict a leaf blower alone, it's just make our regulation too complicated. I think leaf blower along with the lawnmower, they're both for the maintenance of real property and they should be regulated the same way. And that's all. I'm good with either both of them to get a 7 to 6 Monday to Friday or 9 to 6 Monday. I personally don't have a lawn. I converted to a drought-tolerant plant thing, so I'm biased. So I'm glad to see them, to see them to go to 7 to, 9 to 6, but I think they need to be consistent.
Michael?
Yeah. Okay, so lots of thoughts on this. You know, I appreciated what staff put together in the report for us. We have reference to what other jurisdictions are doing. So we've got over 50 jurisdictions listed here, majority of which have some level of ban on gasoline-powered blowers only. And to Commissioner Wu's point, yeah, you know, we've got, by the way, some of these jurisdictions refer to not only leaf blowers, but garden equipment, which would include trimmers, lawnmowers, gas-powered noise-making machines. So I would agree with Commissioner Wu on that, that, you know, this should be, and Commissioner Kelly, that this is more of a broad application, not just to leaf blowers and would like to see that addressed in the recommendation when it goes forward. Two points here that are important and not thoroughly examined in the report or otherwise is pollution, number one. There's tons of information out there from Air Resources Board and other resources that demonstrate that these machines are significantly contributing to our air pollution. And that's a big concern for me, especially in sensitive areas, residential zones specifically. Schools, obviously, we wouldn't want this happening during school hours and I don't think it does anyway, but so let's just focus on residential zones. And noise. So points have been made that, by speakers and as well from other commissioners here that, and in the staff report, that, you know, noise is an issue. And it's probably the bigger focal point in this report. But I think it's important that we have a more of a comprehensive touch here and that is to really examine, have all the facts on the table when we're making a, when we're considering something like this, we consider the potential impact to human health, not just quality of life, not just peace, quiet enjoyment of property, but, you know, health. It's a big deal. And from the things that I've read that aren't here for all of us to explore and to consider is that there is a big problem and it's potentially a very serious one. And I would like to see that recommendation included in, and it goes back to council, that this be revisited and some fact finding be made as to the impact to human health, some real facts and figures on air pollution. With that said, I understand the sensitivity that our Director of Public Works has described to us. I think it applies to other areas, golf courses, not just parks and public facilities, but there's a need to take it out there early so that the uses can be prepared for use. And you can't have, you know, maintenance crews out there during those peak usage times. It just doesn't make sense. So some accommodation there, I think, is warranted and earlier start time is key. And in the more sensitive areas, sensitive uses, residential, specifically residential zones, I'd like to have a discussion with you all up here about possibly banning, dare I say it, banning motorized gasoline-powered blowers and mowers and trimmers in residential zones. We're not the first group of folks to have this discussion. This is an ongoing and current discussion that's happening now. The City of Redondo Beach just recently adopted a full ban ordinance following Manhattan Beach and Hermosa, three coastal cities that are really on board with this air quality thing. And I think it's valid. We've got high-density residential areas, to Speaker's point, and to Commissioner Wu's math, you know, it's just, that's a quality of life issue that really is a serious one and I think warrants some more sensitivity and stricter rules. rake and broom, maybe a quiet alternative, blower, vacuum, something, some exception, but I don't know that that information is here for us to consider if we were to come up with an alternative or a more reasonable approach to this. But for now, we're looking at gas-powered devices and I think that there's just not a place for them in residential zones. And commercial, public facility, industrial zones, absolutely. You can see high-volume areas, large areas to clean where time is important. Wouldn't make sense to be out there with brooms. But in sensitive areas, residential zones, absolutely. And that's Mike Tufts next to him.
Thank you.
Chris? I had a question for staff. Have staff considered putting together language for restricting commercial, not commercial, residential landscapers?
Have we considered, as far as a resident doing?
Commissioner Blackwell was talking about using gas-powered devices in residential areas by commercial or non-commercial entities.
So the ordinance doesn't necessarily discriminate between the two, other than in the section that the owner of each commercially-operated leaf blower shall affix on it a clear identifying manner. And then it goes on to say that the sticker has to be on there and that they are subject to the 65 decibels. That would be for a commercial-operated leaf blower. It doesn't differentiate between residential or commercial areas.
Right. But has staff had those discussions, whether they, whether you want to limit the use of gas-powered devices in residential areas?
Well, as far as that, response to that question, since the direction from council was not, that was not the direction, so we did not.
Thank you.
Okay. Jason?
Amy, real quick. Is there a, is there an ordinance right now that controls lawn equipment and times of use for lawn equipment?
There is. It's more of utilizing it's inherent, noise sources associated with the maintenance of real property. What we've done is to accept leaf blowers and now reference them to Section 8.64.190. However, it is in there and would remain.
So, but then what I'm reading is that today you can't mow your yard on Sunday? Is that correct?
You are...
In our current existing ordinance, can you utilize lawn equipment on a Sunday?
Yes, Monday through Friday, except on city, between hours. There's another exemption, I believe, for property owners.
I can reference the exemption. There's an exemption, noise sources associated with the maintenance of real property, provided such activities take place only between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except city-recognized holidays or between the hours of 8:00 and 6:00 on Saturday, Sunday, or on a city-recognized holiday.
So we can use, I can mow my lawn with a, with a gas or electric. Unfortunately, they don't make a electric mower that will cut my type of grass yet. So I'm forced to use gas, but I can do that on Sunday.
That's correct.
And I can push that high volume of air and I can throw lawn clippings wherever I want to throw them inside my yard.
Inside your yard?
With a beer in my hand on Sunday at 3:00 in the afternoon, I can go out there and engage in the national pastime of cutting my yard.
That's correct.
And drink a beer. So...
Drink and drive.
Don't drink and mow. Yeah, not on a riding lawnmower, right? Not in... I, okay, that was my question for you. And so my, the other question is the schools. So my, I take my son to school every morning, most every morning, and the Capistrano School District's out there blowing at, you know, 7:35 in the morning on the parking lots and on the school, on the school playyards. Did you reach out to Capistrano Unified and ask them about what impact this would have? Because the kids are out there playing during the day.
We actually don't have the authority to regulate the schools.
Okay, so they would be exempt as well?
So, no, I did not reach out to them.
Okay.
Comply with state.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So I don't disagree that it would be nice to move away from gasoline-powered devices. I mean, I use all electric except for my lawnmower because it's a real mower and you have to, you have to do that to cut through the turf. I think, I think we're engaging in massive legislative overkill if we look at carving out this specific type of activity. If we want to regulate commercial activity, to the Speaker's points up here about having lawn services that come in and do things in a commercial activity, I think that's something that is beneficial to look at. I think that we are, if we adopted this ordinance, we are eliminating the ability of somebody that works eight to five to be able to take care of their own yard. And I don't think that's the intention, but, you know, they can't come home and mow their yard at 7:00 o'clock in the evening or at 6:00 o'clock in the evening.
or at 6:00 o'clock in the evening, or whatever the time is here, 6:00 or 5:30. They can't do it on Sunday. They can't do it on Saturday afternoon. And I, and I think that's, candidly, I, I'm appalled that we're talking about this. I think if we're going to do something, we should do it for all kind of lawn care types of activities. I think, you know, make it sweeping, make it easy to understand, don't carve out specific niches. If you want to take a look at putting in place a transition period over the next five years to electric-powered, electric-powered devices, that gives people a roadmap to be able to do that and, and notice. But I, I think this, I think this issue, I appreciate the fact that staff brought this up and put together this, the overview that we have here, but I think it needs to go back to staff with some of these comments, and they need to take a look at a holistic approach to this, and something that is, has a, has a guideline for the future. And like I said, I certainly can appreciate the fact that we had 20 residents show up to a, to a city council meeting, and we're a town of 60,000. So, that's a statistical abnormality, and statistically insignificant sample size. And sure, we need to do something and take a look at it, but let's take a look at it in much wider and sweeping and impactful terms if we want to do something. Let's do something right.
Don?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to segment this and get it back in the box as far as council directions, as far as leaf blowers, and, and kind of follow some of the suggestions that Commissioner Blackwell brought up, and some, and that I'm, many of the cities have banned gas-powered in residential areas. And I'm very comfortable with that, and allow gas-powered for commercial areas, parks, large HOA open space. And if you're, regardless of, you're a residential guy with a beer in his hand on Sunday afternoon, or you're a commercial guy, but he provides service in a residential area, we just don't allow gas-powered leaf blowers in residential areas. He has to equip himself accordingly, and I'm sure they'll do that. And so, even the Dana Point ordinance is referenced in our staff report, allow some of an amortization period, if you say, for everybody, it's about three years or so to, and for one area, and 48 months for the other, to everybody, okay, you got to equip yourself, and it's got to be 65 DBA, and, and in that type of scenario. And so, I'm kind of comfortable that we allow the city to, in the open space, do their, in their public area, you know, gas blowers, and in the timing that the city engineers and Katie's comfortable with. Most of the other contractors she's gone out to, where the HOAs are comfortable from 9:00 to 5:00. But in a residential area, we don't allow gas power. We just, we, we allow the electric leaf blower of choice, the one you even brought here tonight. So, and that's kind of my pragmatic view towards it, to keep it simple. And leaves, you know, for us, ocean city, leaves are one of the more polluting, polluting part of our ocean, because all the fertilizers and chemicals they carry with them, if they get, and if they get through the leaf traps and into the water, it's the grass and all that stuff that, someone who used to be on the Coastal Advisory Commission like, like myself, and I'm looking at him, would recognize that leaves are part of our pollution in the ocean. So, it's important to keep them from going there, and that's where I think leaf blowing is kind of efficient, but to keep, make sure that the neighborhoods are protected, we go with electric versus the gas. So, I think that's the direction I think we should go with, with that. You know, I mean, the timings are fairly simple, they're enforceable, and the equipment in the zones, you know, a code inspector can be in a residential area on a Saturday or any day of the week, and if the, the local gardener, whether he's licensed or illegal, or came across the board, or whatever, whoever the status, if he doesn't have an electric blower in his hand, it's a, it's an enforceable event. It's, it's easy, and it's simple, and it's enforceable. That's kind of where I stand on the issue. The rest of the staff report, I think, is fairly well put together. It's fairly well done. It accommodates that the larger industries that need to do, use gas, and then we protect the residents with electric only. And that's my view.
I think, I like the simplification, I like trying to keep it simple, although that's, a lot of times, it's hard to do. I think, I am actually a little concerned with enforcement. I'm imagining, just from a practical point of view, someone's out there with a leaf blower or something, I call code enforcement. Are they going to be out there in the 20 minutes, 30 minutes that that landscaper's out there? Maybe, maybe not. So, I've got a little bit of a concern of how this gets enforced, enforced in an effective way. But I think, I'm looking at 65 decibels. That's higher than what we have for all of our other noise ordinances. So, that's a bit of a concern. I don't know if there's blowers that come in at lower than that. I'm leaning towards saying, you know, electric. I think they might not be quite as efficient, but...
They're pretty good.
Yeah. But, well, that's, that's the argument of some people who, who comment on the staff report. But it's, you know, if it's quieter, and particularly if it's less polluting, that's helpful. Residential zones, you were talking about a potentially a ban in residential zone, or a way of managing it better, at least in residential zones. I kind of like that. I'm, a lot of people are gone to work during the day. I'm not. I work out of my home, and you can set the clock at 1:30. My neighbor, five feet away, you know, that's when they come on Mondays and, you know, blow it. But it is pretty quick, even though it's loud, and if I have a meeting, I've got to, I've got to move it. It has the advantage of being relatively quick, which is not necessarily the case if you're going down Del Mar or working in a big park. But I do, I do like the idea of having something different in residential zones for, you know, those, you know, things are close, three people on the block are doing it on the same day. You've got a lot of noise there then at that time. I don't want to lay down too much of specifics because I'm starting to feel like this is maybe something that should go back to staff with the input that we've had, and let them try and work out the details rather than us trying to, trying to do it all. But I think, you know, I think, you know, differences in residential zones, trying to ban the gas entirely, being more sensitive, you know, in terms of the noise, that sort of thing, are all things we'd want them to, to look into. So, that's kind of how I'm feeling about it, especially after listening to everyone. So, let's see. Zen, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I like to limit the restriction within the residential zone. And perhaps, in addition to residential, we'll limit that noise creating within certain distance of a school. It doesn't have to be very far, maybe 100 feet, that would be enough. I'm leaning toward a ban on gas-powered maintenance equipments. However, we, I think we need to be a little more practical, especially on things like chainsaw.
Why can't electric chainsaws good?
Better than gasoline one. For a big tree, electric one may not do it. And let me give you another example, stump grinder.
Okay. You got me there.
You can, they probably don't have electric. So, there's certain, certain...
That's not a subject for tonight.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Chris?
How about you? I'm completely for banning gas-powered electric blowers in residential zones, but I had a question. Would that include parks? So, in Telaga, you have houses surrounded by, or parks surrounded by houses. Would that also prohibit, if we said no gas-powered electric blowers in a residential zone, would that prohibit the commercial user from blowing in the park around the homes? Because that's a residential zone, right?
Well, yeah. We could, we could discuss, you know, it could be within a certain number of feet of a resident, within 100 feet of a residential zone, so they could go up to the edge of the park. But I think that's something for staff to take a look at and see the viability of it, and maybe come back to us. So, so, I'm sorry, were you through? Or you have more?
No, no, no. I'm supportive of banning the gas-powered electric blowers within so many feet of a residential zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just to kind of try and summarize everyone's thoughts for, for staff to take back, this is kind of what I've got. Look at including other noisy landscaping machines, lawn mowers, things like that. Consider the human health impact in the ordinance. Possibly ban in residential zones, potential ban on gas-powered devices, and possibly, based on observations Zen made, possibly allowing for special devices like stump grinders. I don't think people are going to be out there every Saturday morning with a stump grinder. So, so there might be certain exceptions, exceptions for that, that sort of a thing. Does that sound like the direction we want to give to staff, those items?
The only other item that I would add in there is that perhaps we shouldn't have separate times. If we're going to ban the gas power, then we keep with the hours of operation that we have right now, which allows people to, for personal property maintenance.
Till whenever, when is that, 7:00 right now?
Yeah, but it's Saturday, Sunday, just like it is right now.
Okay.
But we're eliminating the noise source of the gasoline, and an amortization period of shifting off of gas to electric.
Okay. Do you, I, you know, it sounds like we might be continuing this item. Do you guys have the input from us that you need to, maybe we work things, or do you have a comment on this conversation we've been having? Do you want something, something other, something different from us?
No, I think, I think we've got the direction. I'd say staff, staff would anticipate doing that work and bringing it back for consideration.
Yeah.
To move it forward, to be responsive to the council's wish to bring it back to them.
To bring it back here, and then to them, right?
And then, and then move it on. So, yeah, that would be, that would be my...
I think that's where we're, you know, we'll vote, but I think that's where we're headed.
Okay.
Okay. Pretty good. So, if there's no other discussion on, did we have some discussion or a motion?
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to table, oh, item, hold on here. I'm sorry. To continue this item to a time, agenda item 8A to a time indeterminate.
Date uncertain.
Date uncertain.
A motion by Tally, second by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And we are on to item 8B. This is CUP 18-441, Ichabiri's Full Alcohol. And feel free to get a start at David whenever you'd like.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, the project site is located in North Beach, 1814 North El Camino Real, in the mixed-use one zone and architectural, central business and coastal zone overlay districts. The subject building is listed as a historic resource and is also surrounded by the Miramar Theater, the casino, and the Ole Hanton Beach Club. So, before you is a conditional use permit. Code requires a conditional use permit for indoor and outdoor onsite sales of a full range of alcohol with more than 16 seats and/or four tables. The applicant proposes the onsite sale of a full range of alcohol for indoor and outdoor consumption with a maximum of 49 outdoor seats between the hours of 11:30 a.m. and 9:30 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and between 11:30 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday. The applicant does not propose amplified sound or live entertainment, nor any changes to the approved seating of 119 indoor seats and 49 outdoor seats. So, here we see an image to the left of the outdoor patio area and a floor plan highlighting the patio in yellow. So, some, some background. So, Ichabiri first opened in 1991 with a Type 47 license and sold a full range of alcohol until 2017, when it temporarily closed. Per code, when alcohol sales have discontinued for more than 90 days, the code requires the approval of a minor conditional use permit for beer and wine, or a conditional use permit for a full range of alcohol. Since the restaurant reopened after the 90-day period, the applicant applied for and obtained approval of a minor conditional use permit for beer and wine in March 2018. Service hours are currently limited between 11:30 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. for indoor service, and between 11:30 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. for outdoor service. Further background on parking and seating. So, the, the restaurant is currently allowed to provide 119 indoor seats and 49 outdoor seats. In 2002, the 49 outdoor seats were approved with a conditional use permit, along with 13 parking waivers. Then, the Coastal Commission limited the use of the 49 seats between 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. daily. Per code, the restaurant may use 16 outdoor seats at any time, since no parking is required for this amount of outdoor seating for restaurants that provide more than 32 indoor seats. So, any outdoor seating that exceeds 16 seats may not be used until 5:00 p.m. So, staff recommends that the planning commission make the required findings listed in the staff report and resolution. We have two notable conditions of approval that I would like to point out here. So, condition number three limits indoor service to 11:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and outdoor service from 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's consistent with surrounding, surrounding restaurants and bars in the North Beach area. And then, condition number five, which requires that the applicant provide evidence of Coastal Commission approval to the city planner. So, based on the information provided in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project categorically exempt from CEQA and approve the project subject to conditions. That concludes the presentation. Both staff and the applicant available.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for staff? Michael?
Yes, hi, David. Thank you for the nice presentation. Appreciate it. Two questions. What's happening in that, in the tower, that's on the tall tower, maybe 28 feet tall, 30 feet tall, maybe? Yeah. You can, you don't really see it in all these pictures, but to the right there, you can see it there to the left.
Not too sure. I can...
Is it just an architectural detail, or is there...
I don't know if as a main function too. I can defer to the owner.
Maybe there was a conditional use permit on the property for maybe wireless.
It was a historic structure, I think, that's been there for, when it, when it was designed.
We do have the applicant here that can probably provide an answer.
Thank you. And then, the, the restaurant ceased operation 2017.
Yeah.
Is that correct? For how long?
Don't have the exact date, but when they came back, we staff determined it was after 90 days, when they returned and wanted to reopen.
It was only 90 days?
It was, it was, it was more than 90 days, yeah.
And is, what does our code currently say about cessation of operation? Is it a one year, and the rules kind of change? Is it one year, or is it...
365, yeah. Three, one year. 365 calendar days.
The issue was not closed for more than a year?
No. No.
Is this the original owner, or the former owner? No?
Yes, since 1991. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Are there any outstanding code violations?
Well, no. Staff, they reach out, reach out to code enforcement, and they have no open code cases.
Thank you.
Yeah. This alcohol license and the restrictions, it's substantially the same as it was when they were operating business prior to 2017. Is that correct? There's no, no significant differences?
Prior to 2017, they had no conditional use permit. Since they started, they...
Oh, because they were grandfathered in.
Right, right. So, they started selling alcohol at a time when CUP was not required.
Okay. But, so what they're asking for is, even though they didn't have a permit for it, they were grandfathered in, what they're asking for is essentially what they had.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And I did notice in the report, it says, ABC said that there are currently 15 alcohol licenses in the subject census tract, but five are allowed. So, I'm a little confused by that. It's... It sounds like we're already over by 10. How can we?
Right.
What does that mean?
Yeah, so ABC requires that a PCN or public convenience or necessity finding be made, either by staff, by the city, or the applicant. So I believe that only applies to off-site sales of alcohol when they have to make a PCN finding. For this, in this case, a Type 47 license doesn't require that PCN finding. And since they started 1991, there's no intensification of a license in that area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see. And just out of curiosity, do they still have to go through coastal for this conditional use permit?
That's correct.
So they're going to have that to say?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, well, then I will invite the applicant to come up. You have 10 minutes to address the planning commission if you'd like.
I'm the son of the owner here. He's Yuji Yamada.
I'm the owner, original owner, Ichibiri's son. He's my son. He's also manager here.
Thank you. So we're requesting the full range of alcohol use at a restaurant. We have our facilities all set to serve for alcohol. We have experience with this, so, yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to get back to the 49 hard liquor license that we've been, you know, we've been have since 1991 until 2017 and then temporarily we closed and we like to, we already opened eight months right now, but we have only a B and Y license right now. But we'd like to get back to hard liquor license because we have facility, everything. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, or I'd like to address it. First of all, thank you for your long-term service that you've provided to the community. Your restaurant is kind of a cornerstone of our community, been there for a long time and glad to see you're back. Do you have any plans for the property? Do you have any plans for improvement, anything on your wish list? I know there's nothing in the package now, just a question about the, you know, there's a lot going on in North Beach and I was wondering if you guys have put any thought to that.
Right. Yes, we do. We have, we already submitted an application for a historic preservation agreement and that includes, you know, includes an agreement with the city to fix certain things, structural and kind of appearance-wise. So we have that in mind as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Zen, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. So before this remodeling, you were selling beer and wine. Now you're asking to be allowed to sell a full range of alcohol, including liquor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you already have the Type 47 license from the ABC?
Yes.
Thank you.
And any other questions? No? Thank you. So I will, I'm sorry, did you have something, anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. I will open the public hearing and I don't see any cards, so I will close the public hearing and we will open this up for discussion. Jason?
I support this.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. It's just restoration and formalization of previous offerings, so.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, my full support as well. Happy to see it.
Okay, Zen?
If there's no objection, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, there's one or two other people I think you want to interject. Chris?
The applicant has my full support.
I think that's the quickest we've ever gone through one of these. Congratulations. So.
So I'm going to move to adopt a resolution number PC 18-031, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 18-441, Ichibiri's Full Alcohol to allow the onsite sale of a full range of alcohol for indoor and outdoor consumption at a restaurant located at 1814 North El Camino Real.
Second.
Motion by Zen, second by Tally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. And thanks for your patience, too. I know it's long evening. All right, moving on to new business, we have none. We have no old business. So are there any reports of commissioners and staff? I, oh.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Don, did you have a report?
I, no, I just want to maybe, since all your heavy management and the lawyers are mostly left except our actual full city attorney, if we have more of these STU waivers in the future, I think the whole process from what we saw tonight needs to be tightened up a little bit. I think we need a more complete picture, I think, offered to us. I think the finance department has to come in and what they're really doing and when they sent their notices and whether it's, I think it's all, Scott, wait in there if you want. I think, you know, we need to, if this would ever be appealed to the city council and then you're sitting in the same chair again, I think we'd want to have a more complete picture of the council and so I think we need, I just want to pass that effort, the way that one lawyer saw, there's more than the 19 that were amortized, there's a list of hundreds or whatever, I don't know what was going on there, but somehow I have a feeling that this is a, if we're going to have more of these in the future, I think we need to get the process more standardized and more complete picture from the planning side of it and also the finance side of it and make sure all the timelines are tightened up. And I mean, code compliance is giving extensions with no dates on them. We need to make sure that the process is, A, tightened up and B, it's actually documented in the report so we can make a proper decision here. It's just, I don't know what the other vehicle to bring this up is, I know it's late, but I just thought I'd take the opportunity.
You know, I don't want to put too much on staff in terms of, you know, tons and tons of documentation for us to go through, but, you know, a timeline, you know, indicating this is what happened and this is what we did. And we had some of that in there, but I think as we saw, things could have maybe been a little more detailed, a little more tightened up in that, you know, in that department, so. That's my two cents.
Yeah, and chairman, I would suggest, I noticed some of those points during the proceedings and the short-term lodging unit ordinance is new to me, so, you know, it's noted and we'll make sure to take that into consideration next time.
Huge undertaking.
If I can just, and this is an excuse because I'm very well, very well given or well received, there were scores of these, the windows open and closed, right? Because you heard there was a 30-day period to do it. There were scores of them issued and they were really simple. These four were really complex, the ones that came to you. And by the time it was all hands on deck, they were, they were already decided. And so we appreciate your indulgence on that and couldn't agree more and with, we'll take that up with Cecilia and staff.
And I do say, you know, I have to say, in the end, I know you guys have been working with these five or so and it looks like, you know, many of them ended up really, are still going to be resolved by staff ultimately.
I think all the rest, this is actually, and it's not to gloat, but you just helped us finish out the last challenge, the last concern.
There's one we actually denied tonight that maybe.
Maybe that'll go on a little bit. But you framed the issues really well, but believe it or not, all the lawsuits, all the challenges, every concern over that regulatory program finished out.
There isn't a legal people asking for exceptions.
Yeah, we have had one that was denied and the court actually upheld that denial. But yeah, when they're all done and everybody thinks they have stranded capital after eight years, there could be another one. Absolutely. But I'm, thank you for thinking of that because that is another outlet that people have exercised, some with success, some with a denial. That one was upheld by the court.
It's been a long journey, I know, for you.
Oh, wow, yeah, you were all here for it. It started a long time ago.
That's when the council forgot how to vote on, I don't know, what was it, an exemption or a moratorium.
Yeah. Remember that?
So we got 10 meetings, 10 meetings in three months to get through.
Remember that? Had to go through the LCP process, remember? It was included there with the coastal commission proceedings, so it's been a road, yeah.
Okay.
All right, if there is nothing else, Jason, if you wanted to make a motion.
I'm closing my book. Do you have, go ahead. You got your seat right here? He's trying to. No, I did. Okay. Adjournment. In observance of Thanksgiving, the regular study session and planning commission meetings of November 21st, 2018 have been canceled. The next regular meetings of the study session planning commission will be held on December 5th, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers located at 100 Avenue to Presidio, San Clemente, California.
Moved by Brown, seconded by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? We are adjourned. Unanimously.
Welcome, you got through it.